Let me introduce and speak with glad at the United States of America. In the executive role of which is standing one nation, on the right, individual, for liberty and justice for all.
For announcements, the next regular meeting of the board will be on Friday, January 8th at 9 o'clock here at the community center. And if you haven't done so yet, this is the right time to turn off your cell phones. This is a special meeting where we'll be hearing from a couple of management companies. And the first management company is Kemper Sports, and I will turn the meeting over to you.
My name is Ben Blake. Ben Blake with Kemper Sports. I'm Executive Vice President of New Business Development, been with the company for about 15 years. Done everything from operations to new business and everything that I think in between. So we appreciate the invitation. Want to also introduce John DiMiglio.
My name is John DiMiglio. I'm the National Food and Beverage Director for Kemper Sports. I provide support to all of Kemper Sports food and beverage operations, and I've been with Kemper Sports for almost six years.
Keith Hanley. Hi, morning. My name is Keith Hanley, Senior Vice President of Operations. Cover the southeast and eastern coast for the company, as well as the Stream Song Resorts where he just came from this morning. So that was an easy drive in this morning. I've been at the company 11 years.
Thank you. So today, we're going to really cover whatever topics you want, but we thought first we'd give you a little introduction to Kemper Sports. And then we were sent specific questions the board had. We thought we might as well go ahead and get right to the questions because they are on a variety of topics and I think will be a good way to continue the discussion. Hopefully, this will only be 15, 20 minutes of slides and then we can go into Q and A. Kemper Sports started back in 1978 by Mr. Jim Kemper of Kemper Insurance and Steve Lesnik. Kemper had moved their corporate headquarters out into the, at the time, the country in Chicago, it's not the country anymore, and really started a campus, one of the first campus office settings, built a championship golf course around it and created the company. We have been family owned ever since. Mr. Kemper passed about 15 years ago, and the Lesnik family owns the company. We've grown into over 100 golf courses throughout the U.S., about 6,500 employees in 26 states. But one thing that we really stress is while we have sort of this national scope, which gives us a lot of visibility and buying power, et cetera, that you'd expect from a big company, we strongly believe these are local businesses. These are local golf courses in their own communities, with their own dynamics and their own competition set. And so we really take each course as its own standalone entity and try to get to know not only the course, but become a part of the community. We think that's very important. And so it's really like politics, everything's local. Within our 100 or so golf courses, we have 35 municipal partners or public sector partners, everything from municipalities to park districts to just about any municipal type setting. So we're very experienced with not only working with boards, but working with communities also, working with the media, all the things that go into what needs to be happening and communicate within municipal, public sector space. As you'd expect from our company, like ours, we have a number of proprietary programs. The one we really focus on, or is one we feel strongly about is True Service. It's our employee training program. It's done through five different modules. And we actually have every single employee throughout the company go through the program over each year. And so it's quite an undertaking and commitment, but we find that it delivers a level of customer service and expectation, both from the customer as well as the employees, what we expect of them. And it's been highly successful and really a big part of our culture. The other thing we use extensively is True Review, where every, in the public course setting, when you play the golf course, you finish and you get an email, which is five questions about how you experienced, how'd you like the course, how can we improve? And it's obviously a way that we can very much communicate with our customers almost real time. And everybody, all the senior officers in the company actually get the responses once a week on Monday morning, and then we track the follow-ups and what was said and et cetera. So we believe that customer communication is really key in this business. Obviously, we have a whole general managing training program, again, to make sure that everybody meets expectations, both the employees and the company for them. National counts, we pass on 100% of our savings on national counts. We don't take any of that, but we pass that on to our clients and customers. We have an extensive environmental program called Green to a T. One of our, this has been created by one of our top maintenance people in the company, and it's a four module, again, a four module program that's been very successful and really keeps the whole environmental importance of golf course maintenance, as well as clubhouse things in top of mind for all the staff and hopefully for the customers. Our Center of Excellence is web-driven. It's on the cloud and all of our people have access to that. Best practices, information about the company, all the things that you would expect from a company of our size. Safety National's been a very interesting program, actually driven by Aon, our insurance company, and has really helped us drive down workman's claims and safety mishaps, so to speak, at courses. So that's done in a little golf environment, it's been quite successful. And then, you know, our standard operating procedures. And so while we obviously have, as I said, the local focus, we still have the sort of policies and procedures that, you know, each operation needs to deliver a level of consistency. We are set up both on a national and a regional basis. And so we have, in each region, we have our regional experts that will come and help with Sun 'n Lake. Interestingly, today, Matt Lindley, who reports to Keith and is our regional executive, lives in the panhandle of Florida, out in Destin, his daughter got married yesterday, so we gave him a pass on this meeting. Sorry about that, but that always gets the priority. But Matt leads the team, reporting to Keith. We have a regional sales and marketing person that will be heavily involved. Of course, from the national standpoint, the HR department that does everything HR-related benefits, very, very involved in COVID this year, obviously, and all the protocols and tracking and communication. Again, out of the home office, finance and the controller, et cetera, the whole back of the house from a finance standpoint. Our regional agronomist, John, of course, is our National Food and Beverage Executive and will be heavily involved here. I think it's quite helpful that we also manage Stream Song, and John is at Stream Song quite often as well. So you'll see a lot of John as we work through the F and B situation, procurements out of the office, and then, you know, any way we can help you with strategy or planning or best practices, you know, that's really a big piece of Keith. Keith's job is to help the board on any kind of more global issues. So we believe, you know, in these seven imperatives, also very appropriate for Sun 'n Lake. Obviously, in today's world, the golf course itself has to be in top condition, and the expectation of the customers in today's world are pretty high, so it has to be consistently in good shape. As I said, True Service is one of our cornerstones in delivering a high level of member and customer service. We believe in a very active club. We want a lot of activities and events, and John will address that on the food and beverage side. Obviously, we're in the business to both sell memberships as well as outside events, public play, et cetera, and we understand and we'll talk a little bit about that dynamic a little bit later. One of the keys is communication with you. You know, no one likes surprises. I think that our job is to keep you totally informed. If there are issues, you'll be the first to know. And we, as we'll say a little bit later, we also believe in total transparency. And so you will, you will be hearing from us a lot, and to the extent that you want to be involved in whatever level of decisions, we are open to that. We feel like this is a partnership. And then lastly, you know, manage the property in a financially proven manner. We tend to run these golf courses if we owned them. That's the only way we know how to do it, as if your money's our money. And so we think that that is key, and obviously, given your responsibility, that's key to the community. So that's a very big piece of the puzzle as well. So, you know, one of the first questions, and that's sort of a snapshot of the company, and if you have any questions, you know, please jump in. But one of the questions the board asked, and we thought we'd just go ahead and address these, is, okay, what is the value-added Kemper Sports? And so we have a number of things I'm going to talk about. You know, initially, as you can see by the proposals, we had the lowest fee structure. This isn't so much that we're trying to be the low bidder, it's that we believe that in today's world, we need to have a little skin in the game, that we don't have a problem charging a lower base management fee and earning our keep on an incentive basis. And so what we do is we work with the boards to determine, what are the priorities for you? You know, you get the behavior you reward. So if you want food and beverage to be more profitable, then we could do an incentive on that. If you want more golf rounds, we can do incentive of that. We really don't have any standard incentive. It's really based on your goals and objectives, and we work through that. As I said, we pass on 100% of our buying savings to the club. We don't drag any percentage. And there's really no, our charges, I mean, there's a, you know, there's a $2 on something on payroll, a couple of things that would be a payroll charge, for example, that's pretty standard. But our fee is our fee, and it's sort of all in one package. We also believe from a value standpoint, and a little bit about the company is really our culture. Every company's got their own culture, their own beliefs. Ours is probably largely family-driven. It's been a family business. You know, I think we try to treat each other from a family standpoint, both for fun and respect, and so that's been quite, quite helpful in growing the company. We feel like we're very client-centric. We work for you. You establish the policies. We execute your policies. We're here to help and provide guidance, provide input, but ultimately, here the decision-makers as to the priorities of the golf course, how you want it operated, et cetera. As I said, we're relationship-driven. I love the quote of our founder, and then he says, "There's no such thing as a business relationship. These are all personal relationships." These are, you know, after, as you all know, when you sign a multi-year deal, it's relationship-driven, and there's a lot of highs and a few lows, and you have to work your way through those. As I said earlier, we're really, it's a local focus. We believe strongly on that. And we're hands-on operators. We operate them as if we own them. One of the benefits of having a big portfolio is we get to see a lot of things that work and some things that don't. And so we use a best practices sort of mentality, and this really helps, especially in marketing and things, ways to drive revenues that are working in the country. Or if you have a question and you want comps, we find that a lot. Gee, how does our course compare to similar-type courses from an expense standpoint? So we obviously don't list the course, but we can give you comps. And it helps, you know, give everybody context to both the spending as well as sometimes the issues and then eventually the solutions. As I said earlier, you know, we have regional experts and national experts in all disciplines. We believe strongly that you have access to that. And the way we work is Matt's sort of the quarterback, so if he has a sales and marketing question or thing he wants to deal with, he'll bring in the sales and marketing person. If he's an agronomy issue, bring in the agronomy person. If you all want to talk to someone specifically, so you have access to all these various people. And that, we have eight golf courses in the state of Florida. We're here all the time. We're up the road at Stream Song and Winter Haven. So we have a lot of our regional people visiting other properties, so it really helps sort of win-win for everybody, because if they're in the neighborhood, they can stop by. And then, as I said, our buying power, we think adds value and will save, save some money, especially on the big purchases, golf carts, maintenance equipment, irrigation, anything like that. The savings are material. So I'm going to turn it over to Keith now to talk about golf, and then John will talk about, you want to?
Good morning again, everybody.
Good morning.
Whoopsie, turned it off. Yeah. So again, what should be addressed next is first is golf. And we're trying to take a look out there and then try to how are we going to mesh everything together from the members?
Get everything together and meshing the membership along with the daily fee public guests that are coming to the property. And we've heard some of those, there we go. Golf agronomy, the input areas are acceptable, but the roughs in many areas seem to have some weeds in there. We're about there again today, that some of those areas need to get cleaned up, so it's more constant stand of grass. Makes the course look a little bit unkept in some areas, and it's maybe not the best appearance, so we'd like to dive in with the agronomy team to figure out what some of those challenges may or may not be. Overall, the greens look to be in nice condition, as well as the teas, but really, the roughs did stand out from an agronomic standpoint to us. And at the end of the day, that can impact the reputation of the golf course for the members, customers, and the ownership. Golf marketing, pricing, positioning, and the brand. I've been able to do a very in-depth look at, you know, what is the pricing that comes out about the golf courses? And we think there's ways that you can step those up and tier them into specific times of the year, and, you know, hopefully get a little bit more value add and a higher price point, ultimately driving additional revenue. I think some of the other ones is some of the marketing appears to be just a little bit too much, when maybe we want to focus back on the overall brand of Sun 'n Lake, the golf course, and not as much about discounts, specialized times where you can get a lower rate on just about anything, but really let's focus more in about the brand of the golf Address the tee time management policies. Thanks again, but we've heard that there seems to be some challenges that are coming from, again, having shotgun Starks memberships that's out there with the daily fee public. And I would guess that that comes at different times of the year. That's more challenging than other. And again, there's just a little bit of the, we're talking about, in our minds, this would be a little bit too busy, maybe in terms of the marketing strategies that are coming for the course. There's a lot of information that's enclosed in there. Maybe we can get it back to a couple of different price points, not as much as 50% off. We'll catch the reader's eye, but want to use more about pitchers and the branding of the golf course. Is this effective? Only three or four rounds per member, the player advantage card that's being offered? And again, we'd have to do a lot more, you know, research into this and get into the numbers and the POS system and what is working. But again, we would take a look at, is this actually working for you, or is it better just for the guest? Does it have to be at a different price point?
I'm sorry, what do you mean by only three or four rounds per member?
Number of rounds that are actually coming from this card. So should it be much more than that?
That's what we're getting, really?
That's what we believe you're getting, yes.
Yeah, in the, in the marketing plan, it says there's 300 or 400 cardholders and 1,200 rounds. So, you know, doing the, doing the arithmetic, it's three or four rounds per member.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. So again, just another one, is this effective? Are we driving it the right way? Can we, you know, get additional rounds and revenue coming off this card? Is there different ways to do it? And again, that all comes with a little bit of the research that comes in the first, you know, 100 days of, you know, managing the golf course. You really got to dig into the overall numbers that come from the point-of-sale system, do some focus groups with your membership and the regular daily fee guests. Golf, move to a more effective customer segmentation strategy, today's golf strategy. I know this is a little bit difficult to see due to the size, but it's really a pricing, how we feel that you could change your visitor rates during your prime season and charge even more, but still maintaining a reasonable cost structure for those who live within Sun 'n Lake. And again, based on the numbers and the rates that we're seeing being posted currently today, we still feel that there's an opportunity to increase those for those living outside of the community. New pricing and segmentation strategy going forward. Introduce Florida resident rate with certain booking rights. Introduce a non-Florida resident rate to receive higher rates and revenues for those that are coming from out of state. And again, we just think there's an additional opportunity that can be managed well from in-state and out-of-state. Yes, sir.
We provided you a list of all of the group, number of groups that we have here. Can you commit to those people still having those rights if you were to take over the business?
I believe we can, yes.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that in a, so we're going to do food and beverage now, then we'll talk about the tee time strategy. But the short answer is yes. I think there's some decisions that need to be made in terms of how to do that. So we'll talk about that in a few slides.
All right.
Thank you, everybody. Good to talk to you again. What about food and beverage? So as we look at our food and beverage operation currently, and then we looked at even the pro-formas that were provided by our competitors, one of the things that's super critical for us, and it's kind of our company statement that we take to any of our properties right now, is being intelligent about how we strategize coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic, because it's had the greatest impact on all of our food and beverage operations, and ensuring that we have smart strategic ideas on what we're going to be doing, but we're realistic about the way that our market's going to rebound from everything that's took place. And so as we look to our 2020 forecast for the property, our approach currently is to be excessively conservative for Q1, moderately conservative for Q2, and then really seeing some rebound in Q3 and Q4. So from a revenue perspective, we think that we have a concept that makes sense. And then from a margins perspective, we're going to be inside of the margins that are probably with our closest competitors. Our philosophy is to be realistic and not to over-promise and under-deliver. What we're seeing in the state of Florida is a little bit different than some of our other markets, because restrictions have come off the books a little bit earlier. However, consumer confidence hasn't come back to the same level as it was prior to the pandemic. So overall assessment of food and beverage, what our major initiatives are going to be to meet our pro forma and forecast? One, we're going to be realistic and not going to have any surprises. Two, our goal in food and beverage is to get to a break-even without our G and A expenses. And I think we've got a plan to do that. First is going to be analytics and approach. We're going to do some deep dives into your menus. We're going to understand the price points. We're going to understand the pressures. We're going to look at your organizational structure and see where your labor expenses are coming from. And more importantly, we're going to program around the community. The golf course in and of itself, while robust in nature, having 36 holes, 300 members, and however many thousand rounds come through it each year, for it to really be solvent, it's going to really take more engagement throughout the community. And we're going to do that from an activities-based perspective. From a promotional-based perspective, we're going to enhance on some of the marketing strategies. We're going to leverage some of the other areas in our portfolio. We're going to certainly improve your search engine optimization in certain elements, your website, which is super critical in the food and beverage world right now. We're going to market your restaurant to the entire community. Again, the golf member and the resident that is participating at the golf course needs to be expanded further to all resident base to get advantage of the full 9,000 members of the community. Additionally to that, we're going to improve your outreach from a banquet and catering perspective to stretch out a little bit further into the county that's got a, you know, more dense population than directly here in Sebring, provided we can come up with a structure that makes sense from a board perspective, and we don't deny access to the facility at certain times. We're going to review your pricing. There's certainly opportunities for price reductions in certain areas. There's going to be opportunities for us to maybe make modifications to portioning in kind of the way that we produce the content for you. But we're going to keep it within a price threshold that makes sense to the current resident base and the general market in our area. Turn this over to Ben for the priorities over the next 90 days, unless anybody has any questions about food and beverage.
We've only got a few more here, so, okay. So one of the questions was, you know, what are the priorities the first 100, or the first 90 days? Obviously, to review the 2021 budget, we have not seen that yet, and certainly want to take a, take a look at that. As you would expect, look at the organ chart and staffing, get to know the staff. You know, these transitions, from our standpoint, you know, we don't come in and make wholesale changes. We, the team usually stays in place, especially in season now. We want to understand from the board what your goals are and objectives are, and how you view the various staff people. But, you know, since we haven't gotten a chance to meet anyone or get to know them, we really will spend quickly, get to know them and get to know the staff, their capabilities, et cetera, before we decide to make any changes. As John said, a full review of the F and B department, top to bottom, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. As Keith said, just the whole customer segmentation, pricing, are we positioned correctly? Are we offering enough opportunity for Florida residents and others to play? And then lastly, clearly, the shotgun strategy and the whole tee time organization is something that needs to be discussed and with the board, and just to make sure that this is what the community wants, this works for everybody, and can work within the framework of the tee time schedule. So, you know, we are very sensitive to member access. Actually, I think all three of us have run clubs here in the state of Florida. This is not something new to us. We understand, you know, when you have a membership and you have daily fee, there's probably inherent conflicts to some degree. There's a way to work through that. We're very used to working with shotguns. So we need to know a little bit more about the details, but we don't see a problem working through this and making sure that it works for both parties. Might there be some changes? Sure, if it's not quite working right now, but I don't think you're going to see a material change. And, you know, this is all within the context of the financial goals. Obviously, the public play drives a lot of revenue, and so that can't be, can't be ignored. And so we have to, you know, we have to find the happy medium and the right mix for everybody within the context of the financial goals. And as we all know, it's, you know, the tough thing about Florida is sort of the snowbird busy time is when the daylight's the shortest. And so that's always the challenge. If we can sort of get to mid-March and daylight savings time, a lot of these issues go away. But these next couple, couple, you know, 90 days, three months, is always, is always tricky, tricky because of the daylight situation. So, you know, specifically, how do you deal with this? I mean, there's obviously two, there's two options. One, you know, have, have shotguns at eight and one. Now also, there's a way to do backward, what we call backwards shotguns, where you might start players on 14 through 18, they play through, then the first tee's open. There's a different way to do that. But we can work within the existing framework to determine what's the best solution and But we can work within the existing framework to determine what's the best solution, and both from a member's standpoint, from a public play standpoint, and a financial standpoint. You know, option two would be to designate one golf course for members per day and one golf course for public per day, and switch those. We've seen it done both ways. We've done it both ways. It really depends a lot on how much public demand there is. And then, of course, there's always a way to release all the times. If the tee times aren't taken by the public, you can do it within 24 or 48 hours is another solution here. So we don't know how they're doing it today, but certainly there are a lot of different variations here, and we're comfortable we can figure it out and work with the board to decide what's the best, both from a member's standpoint, from a public play, and from a financial standpoint. A few other topics. You know, the board asked, well, what's your view on transparency versus private? The only thing I think we believe is proprietary is our programs, and we certainly would ask that we protect those. But the financial information from the golf course is your information. You know, when we were sent the original information, there were some things that couldn't be shared, and as far as we're concerned, any information on the course level is owned by the district and controlled by the board, and you would determine whether that's released or not. Obviously, we have to protect individual personal information by laws and anything else by law. But other than our proprietary programs, it's all within the board's control, and you decide, you know, what you want released and to whom. And then lastly, one of the questions was just, you know, buying equipment versus leasing. And we do a couple of things. We, first of all, try to make the equipment last as long as we can. We're, you know, it's, that's part of the business, and you really are evaluating at what point are you spending more on fixing the piece than getting rid of it? What we would do is go through piece by piece, look at the hours, look at the condition, look at how it's being used. Do you need it? In many cases, you find out that a piece isn't really needed, or technology's gotten better and you can do something with another piece. And ultimately, for our clients, it boils down to, you know, leasing is a form of financing. So do you want to spend your cash today, or do you want to finance a particular piece of equipment? And that tends to be just more of a financial analysis with the district's financial people and whether you want to lease or buy. And so I believe those are the specific questions you asked, and obviously, we're here to answer any and all questions. And that wraps up sort of the formal part of the presentation.
I can, I just have quickly, and these are questions I've asked the previous ones. I was glad to hear about what you want to do with our employees, because it's a concern. This is small enough to be like a family.
Sure.
And not only try to keep as many as you feel is qualified, in my mind, my perspective, what I would want. And are you available and have enough qualified people to replace anybody that would go or want to go down in the future? Because quite frankly, I can tell you, some of the times we don't get, you know, a really qualified person, and sometimes it's, and it's important for us.
Right.
To not be some little place in Sebring, Florida.
Right. Well, I'm going to answer your question globally, and then I'm going to have John, because we have a situation at Winter Haven that he could talk about from an F and B standpoint. Again, philosophically, the way we do it is we basically say, look, everybody's got a 90-day trial period. And what's interesting is the people that want to stay, stay, and it seems like after 90 days, if for whatever reason, they either don't buy into the new program or whatever, they almost leave on their own as opposed to.
Yeah, and that's what I meant.
And so, and we're going in-season. So we would want stability, and, but I'm going to let John and Keith sort of answer the specific about staffing.
So our general philosophy is retain and retrain. So we're going to keep all the staff that wants to be here, and then there's going to be certain staff that obviously might make decisions to move on. From a hiring perspective, we're going to take a different approach in general on garnering the type of staff, particularly the line-level staff, that has been the biggest struggle for most facilities of this size, to get the number and qualified people to be in-house and prepared to do all the elements we need them to do. Additionally to that, we're going to provide them the correct training, onboarding, all the experiences to keep them with us for a period of time. But we're going to expand our market search. We're going to advertise in different areas than probably y'all have before from a hiring perspective. We're going to go through a multi-layer approach. We're also bringing, you know, the gravitas of the Kemper Sports name, which in the hospitality industry is, you know, means something, and it can be a little bit of a more substantial career for somebody. But we're confident that any positions that may come up that need to be filled, we've got a process to fill them, specifically a great interviewing process to ensure that they're qualified and quality candidates. And then we're going to do an unbelievable job of onboarding them and then training them up to make sure that they can execute in their role and want to participate at the facility for an extended period of time. Yeah, you know, for example, Winter Haven Country Club is another smaller type of private club facility, and we were able to take a staffer that had outgrown their role at Stream Song but wasn't quite yet ready for a larger role at that facility, and has taken over an important part of the food and beverage operation at Winter Haven Country Club and is a fixture point. And so we'll have some opportunities like that here as well, I certainly believe.
Think you did a pretty good job with that, John.
Thank you.
That answer?
Yes.
Okay, great. Use your mic, Ray. Yeah.
I got a few questions. You were talking about this true service a little while ago. Who provides all that training, actually?
So true service training, we started this about five years ago. We did certified training for a number of staffers, and we continue that. So in a place like your facility, we'd have to bring team members in, so myself, other GMs, other regional operating executives. So we'd get to the point where we'd actually train the trainers here at your facility, and we'd probably need three or four of them. But once they've been trained, they'll be able to go through our four different modules.
Yeah, we have video, and so a lot, you know, it's, certain modules are done online, and then there's testing with those modules that the employees have to fill out, and so that they, you know, like all we, like a lot of online testing these days to make sure that you went through the program. But the, about two years ago, we realized that we needed to do it every year, because you have X amount of turnover at these facilities. And so literally, as Keith said, we have someone responsible at the site who owns true service, and then our team helps them train, and then they, when they have questions, they come back to our team. So it's sort of a two-way street.
And at a facility like ours, who would that person be?
Typically, your general manager and your department heads is usually who we train to be the trainers of true service. Sometimes if we're looking for a growth opportunity, maybe you have a captain or a lead service person that's great with customer service, and we'll train them to be the trainers of true service. Because it's an attitudinal-based training program, it deals with experiences and not necessarily technical skills in any one department. So it translates across food and beverage, agronomy staff, merchandising, gentlemen in the pro shop. So we would designate key people at the site level. They would eventually become trainers of the true service program. But in the initial phases, it'd be any member of our national and regional team that would be providing support to the facility and/or some of our other Florida properties where some of their trainers come over and help implement the process.
One of the things we've learned that's, I think, really interesting is, the staff likes it because they understand expectations, what's expected of them. You know, this is a two-way street. So because they now know how they're going to be measured and what their expectation, what we expect from them in terms of the way they treat not only the customers, but we believe this is how we treat each other.
Okay. Just in general, I'm curious, golf rounds up?
Okay, I was just going to ask for a little clarity on that last point. The, so what I'm hearing is that your outside people would come in and train our key people so that our key people could then train the rest of the staff and ongoing train the rest of the staff.
Right. And the key is, we've learned is, that can't be just a one-time thing. You know, the following year, we have to do the same thing and the same thing. It's been quite successful.
In general, do you find that golf rounds throughout this part of the world are up or down or even, or what?
Our rounds of golf are significantly up, specifically in the last six months. Most of our facilities are running 20%, 30% over budget and prior year.
So that'd be 20% to 30% more rounds?
That's correct.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, now, the F and B side is different because there's been a lot of closures. So golf is up, and generally, F and B has seen some.
I just got some questions pertaining to your write-up that you sent us. I guess the pro forma numbers that you gave us, I'm a little confused on. The restaurant number, payroll of $450,000, which I think is what you think is what.
Right.
I mean, that's an unrealistic number. We agree with that.
Well, that's on, so, and John can address this as well, but we view an F and B that is based on revenue, and you have to scale up and scale down based on your revenue.
But you would certainly never give us a plan like this and ask us to accept it, right? Tell me that's right.
From an overall perspective, you have to be within acceptable margins of what's going on in the industry. And right now, currently, you're way above what we would accept typically from an industry standard. Usually, you're going to want to be somewhere around 40%, rough and tumble, of your total revenue dollars all in with your benefits packages and everything else. So there would be efficiencies that we would look to find to generate the $950,000 in the first year to ensure that you have some sustainability and profitability for the long term. But that also goes into the deep dive of, without actually experiencing your operation, there are kind of things that can be a little bit different in any type of location that may be above or below that number, but that we would assess once we get a little bit more involved in the operation on a day-to-day.
I think the confusion comes from this. The F and B department has variable costs based on the revenue. If it does $1 million in revenue, we target a 50% payroll cost. If it were to do $1.5 million in revenue, that payroll cost would now go to $750,000, because you have more staff, more this, more that. Because we're saying in the COVID year, that's only the first year, if you look at the other project, at the, in the COVID year, we're only projecting $950,000 in revenue, which is significantly below everybody else. Based on last year's trend, this year's trend, I should say, and based on, quite frankly, we think that this, and we can see it in the news, that this year is going to continue to be difficult. So I think Shroon's.
I'm not disagreeing with your $900,000.
Yeah.
I'm disagreeing with, it's an unrealistic number to say 50% of that $900,000 is going to be my labor cost, when you look at traditionally what we just came out of. I mean, our labor cost this year was.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven percent.
But isn't there also, and I think a little difference here is, you do have, as I understand, a GNA cost allocations in that? You don't?
No, not that, not the number I'm telling you.
Well, I think we're all surprised at 78%, quite frankly.
Well, we are surprised, and it's very high. But that's not the point. The point is that the cost, we spent some $785,000 on payroll and benefits in the food and beverage operation. You're recommending, I think, $475,000, which is a difference of some $300,000. And I'm just saying to you, your number may be the number that we want to get to, but ain't no way in hell we're going to get there the first year.
That's not necessarily true. I can't say today whether there's efficiencies that we can find, whether your hours.
I can't reduce that by $300,000.
Whether your hours of operation are accurate or inaccurate, and the numbers that we used are in line with what are historical with clubs of your size in similar-type markets and similar-type pay structure. So it's really all about how you structure your staffing model and how you want to go about executing.
Yeah, we have the same question you do. We don't understand why it's 78%. We don't have the detail to know.
We don't either.
But we, and, you know, maybe there's reasons, and you know how those things are, but.
I'm sure there are, but the point is, I think you had these numbers. If you had these numbers, you've got to realize that there's no way you could give us a plan for $450,000 and expect us to go, okay.
Except if we only do $950,000 in revenue, that assumes there's less traffic, right? And if there's less traffic, there should be less employees. And so your costs should go down commensurate with your revenue line. Now, there's certain fixed costs. Your chef is X, and your dining room manager is Y. But, John, but, you know, a lot of this is driven by hourly pay. And if the restaurant is not busy or open too many hours, or you're paying too high an hourly rate versus tips, there's a lot of things that drive that expense line.
And I don't disagree with you.
And what we're saying is, our assumption is the revenues are going to be in the $950 range, and we're comfortable with a 50% payroll cost. That's what we're saying.
Do you feel you can do that immediately?
We've done this turnaround at another municipal-type facility inside of nine months.
Yep, okay, nine months, but.
To get to 50% for that next calendar year, we were, we ended up making the 50% number. 50% is well within the realm of what would be acceptable for an operation similar in size.
And I understand that, but for not, to think that we could go to $475,000 in the first year, if it takes you nine months to get your plan in place.
No, don't misunderstand what I was saying. We were, we achieved our goal inside of the next calendar year. We got to the 50% where our target was. Really, for me, it's understanding what your organizational structure is like, because you might be top-heavy also from a general perspective, and you're paying too much in salary that doesn't take into your, you know, it becomes fixed, and now you don't have enough variable. And so that's something else that we need to look at, without understanding the full scope of how we're paying people. Additionally, I do believe that there is an element of your GNA expense in that $770-some thousand versus, we don't have the GNA expense in our $400.
In our number, there is.
Yeah.
We have GNA. The number I gave you, GNA is seven.
Right, that's, those are our numbers. If we added the GNA back up to the $450,000, if you, see, we don't know what that number is. But I, let's sort of, and I would also say another thing. If the restaurant is currently running 78% payroll, we need to fix that immediately.
I don't think you can argue with your.
I would say that there's an example where there's a high degree of sense of urgency, and, you know, we don't have much time to get that fixed. So we would address that immediately, see what the staffing levels are, see what the pay levels are, see why that number's 78, and immediately make a change.
Okay.
Let me clarify your concern. Are your, is your concern that we can't go down that fast because it would have too big an impact on staff? We'd be cutting staff hours?
My concern is, if you presented that to us as a budget number.
Well, it would have detail behind it.
I don't care what it has behind it, it ain't going to happen. It's not realistic.
If there's detail behind it, it's going to lay out specifically your hours of operation, the number of staff we're forecasting in any given position, the salary that they're going to be associated with them, the benefit costs associated with them, and we could at least draw a map and say, hey, here's where this number comes from, here's how it's being originated, here's what our impact of plus or minus of our revenue number is going to have on that payroll number. It's not a shot in the dark.
I agree that that percentage, that you're saying 50%, I agree, that's a. I agree that that percentage, that you're saying 50%, I agree, that's a good guy, that's where we should get to.
Right.
But to say you can get there as quickly as you're telling us, I, I can't see it. If you told me...
It's like the flip of the switch, you're not gonna make it.
If you told me it's a three-year process, I'm gonna get you to 50% in three years, I go, babe, I'm on, I'm with you. But if you say I wanna do it in one day, I'm gonna tell you, you're kidding yourself.
Well, it's, it, from my experience, I don't have as big a problem with their number as you do. It's really a question of, if your concern is pulling Band-Aid off quickly to fix the problem or doing it gradually so there's less impact to the staff, then that would be an issue. But if you just wanna fix the problem, it can be done pretty quickly.
We write a staffing model.
That is an example where we would bring the board, the game plan, we would bring the board, the ga-, here's our findings, here's our recommendation. The board could say, you know what, let's wait until April before we do that. Okay, I mean, those are the kind of things that we work with the board to say, here's what, here's our findings, here's our recommendation, here's what we think is gonna happen. What do you wanna do?
I'm just giving you my opinion. And I'm only one out of five. Take it for what it's worth. You never did answer on the, on the carts and, and the equipment. Do you guys prefer leasing or prefer we buy? Right now, we're leasing both programs, carts and equipment.
I think we see most of our public sector clients buy maintenance equipment and lease carts. Almost everyone.
And that would be your recommendation?
That would, that's, would be what we see of our 35 clients. I can't think of one that leases maintenance equipment. They tend to all buy and they tend to largely, some buy carts as well, but sort of depends on the cash position of the...
On page, uh, 22, you've got a list here of all these programs that are available under player development? That's okay.
Yeah, yes.
You want a copy of this? My question on this is, are these programs, are they free to the people or is there a charge to participate in these programs? I mean, they seem pretty interesting, but it doesn't mention whether, or is there a cost to them?
With respect to the player development programs, they, with respect to the player development programs?
Yeah, I don't, it says adult golf programs, junior golf programs that are, that you guys offer. Are they free and is there a cost?
We, we do have some that are free, but most of them have some sort of incremental small cost to them.
While we're on the, uh, programs here, talk to me a little bit about your junior golf programs and your familiarity with First Tee. Is that an active program at Kemper or...
Absolutely. We, we have a number of First Tee facilities within Kemper Sports. I don't wanna shoot out what that number is, but we...
Uh, we were the founders of the Chicago First Tee or, you know, one of the founding partners and we have a First Tee in Chicago, one in New Jersey at John's facility.
At my home facility, the First Tee of Raritan Valley is housed at our facility and our teaching pros are instrumental in kind of the implementation of their programming. Um, and then junior golf, we've gotten so large that I think we have six junior golf teams out of that same New Jersey facility, um, besides all the host teams that we play against. But Keith can talk a little bit more about our national junior golf programming and how development of the game is critical for us.
Also, absolutely, it's where we, we have a player development month throughout the company, um, heavy, heavy junior camps that happen throughout the summertime. I'll also say that the last two years in a row that our PGA professionals slash general managers have won the PGA of America Player Development Awards. Uh, we, we as a company stand extremely behind it as well, but every one of our facilities will, um, would have a junior program of some sort operating.
And something cool about a Florida program, at the club at Grand Daisa, they did some really cool, uh, summer camps for, for juniors and it was smaller in the weeks and timeframe so that if you had grandkids visiting from out of state, they could participate for a few days and made it part of like a, a family type of experience over the summertime, which is usually fairly soft, soft in our Florida markets.
I'm just curious, on page 23, the very last thing, it says save up to $8,000 insurance premiums. What was that? What is that?
What we do is, is a little bit, that's probably more so for our private clients. Uh, our private clients ask us to, to quote insurance through our program and, uh, I'm not sure it's app, we're happy to, but I'm not sure it's applicable to public sector.
Okay, so, yeah. You're directly related down with Kemper Insurance?
No, we, we use Aon.
Oh, okay.
All right, so that doesn't really work, apply to us. On page, uh, 28, on your technology and marketing, is there, you list like Easy Links and Sprout Social, a bunch of stuff. Is there a cost to using your technology partners or is that part of your fee that we're paying you? Or is that part of your service that you provide?
Uh, well, we have the support services that come with it, but if you're gonna use, uh, do a LinkedIn push or something of that nature and an Instagram push, there's a cost to the facility, but it, it's very minimal. You currently have some sort of a POS system, uh, that would be like an Easy Links and there, there is a monthly fee for that, but we, we do all the support that's behind it.
So on Easy Link, I'm having, you, you're a supporter of Easy Link?
We are, yes.
An Easy Link, if I remember, if I understand it correctly, if you book through Easy Link, you pay, is it a monthly fee or you pay per booking or how's that, do you know how that works?
Are you talking the business or the guest? 'Cause the business would use Easy Links as their POS system.
Somebody uses Easy Links to book, uh, 18 holes at Sun and Lake.
So they must be having some sort of a, like a golf and out program?
Well, I mean, uses something like, all right, golf and out.
I think what you're referring to through Easy Links, there's two ways to purchase it as a point-of-sale platform. You could do it in trade times where those times go to Easy Links, they sell them out through their third parties and whatever monies that gets generated through that tee time goes to Easy Links and that pays for your point-of-sale. Or you could pay for the point-of-sale same way you would Micros or any other kind of point-of-sale system. Um, I'm not sure what you are currently operating on.
Yeah, most of the tee time companies now either barter or, well, we're one of the few companies that they'll allow to just pay a commission. We don't particularly like the barter system where basically the club, I don't know if that you, they do it here or not, would give two tee, tee times a day to Easy Links. Easy Links then has its own website and they're actually competing against Sun and Lake for selling their tee times. And if you'll look on the tee sheet, oftentimes they'll discount that rate to try to sell ahead of you. And there are rules that we put in place that say, hey, you can't undercut our own golf course. We tend to like more so to pay a commission because ultimately when you add it up at the end of the year, it's less expensive to the course to play, to pay the commission versus... But we encourage you to actually book directly 'cause then there's no fee. And so, you know, you're trying to create that kind of loyalty so that you're not paying Golf Now a booking fee, for example.
Okay, so the answer is some of these we pay for and some of these we don't pay?
That's correct.
Directly through the website.
It's the general website issue without...
No, through the Sun and Lake website.
On 32, you talk about the transition, that all these, uh, your staff or, I'm sorry, the facility staff now becomes your staff.
Correct.
You guys, uh, they work for you guys, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
And that you pay for their medical, dental vision and all that kind of stuff?
Well, so all the employees become Kemper Sports employees. They, they go on to our benefits program. First they have to qualify as full-time versus part-time. Then we've got gold, silver, bronze, and they choose between that. And, uh, we work with the, uh, the district on, um, on the payment, you know, of how that's, how that's divvied up from what the employee pays versus what the golf course covers.
I'm sure, I'm sure we pay for it. I'm sure we pay for it.
Yeah, everything is, is a pass-through, but, uh, happy to share the details of our insurance plan with you and the various ways that it works. What, uh, you know, generally speaking, the only people that obviously are full-timers, they tend to be the department heads if they want insurance, but any part-time doesn't qualify for our insurance program. And in the golf business, you know, quite a bit of it is part-time labor.
In that first 90 days, are they considered to be probationary employees?
No. No, they become, yeah.
I get, I, I, I think what I'm having the most difficult time is with all of you guys, all the different companies, including the one we have, what do you guys do for us? I mean, I'm missing this, I hear a lot of...
Clinically, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna provide a very detailed recap of why your labor percentage is at 77%. You're gonna have a full understanding of the reasons behind it. We're gonna ensure that we're within acceptable margins from a business departmental perspective. We're gonna ensure that we're providing, uh, a level of professional insight, 'cause this is what we do every day, uh, to ensure that your business is oper-, operating at the most effective level for what the municipalities and the board goals are. We're gonna provide you with, um, relationships inside of the industry, whether it be in Lawn Ford and Chem, food and beverage purchasing, that's gonna reduce your purchasing prices. Uh, we're additionally gonna be a partner and that's probably the big area that we're different than any of our competitors and any of the people that you're gonna talk to today is, our goal is to be a partner with the board. We're here to achieve the goals that the board has for the golf course and for whatever community involvement the expectation is. And so we'll develop our strategic plan, one year, three year, five year, together in an effort to make sure we achieve those goals in an intelligent and sound way.
How often am I gonna see you guys?
Regularly. Um, you know, it really depends on which area or department. Um, Keith can speak a little bit more specifically about, uh, Matt and his involvement at the property, but, uh, you will see me as much as you need to see me. So if the business is having challenges or issues, um, I will be here often and more often. If we get to a point where we're established, I'll still be here regularly, but maybe not as frequently as while we're trying to, you know, develop the program and get the onsite team, 'cause really that's the key, is getting your onsite team to follow and subscribe to our philosophies and then our level of accountability, make sure that they're doing the right things for a long-term basis.
You, you've sort of put the stake in the ground that John's gotta get to 50%, so I think he'll take that as a personal...
I might have to wash your dishes for the first year, so...
But let, let me answer your question, 'cause I, I think, uh, look, you know, first of all, does the district wanna be in the golf business? Do you wanna have employees? Do you wanna be directed the employees? Do you wanna be on a day-to-day basis operating that golf course, making marketing decisions, making operational decisions, working with the membership, trying to decide every day how you want the golf course to operate? And if you wanna be in that business, then you don't need a management company and you have the internal expertise, which you actually do, to do that. Not sure you wanna do that, but...
I'm retired.
But, uh, and so if you wanna do that, then you don't need a management company. But if you don't wanna, you know, your board, it's a board that has more global policy, uh, decisions and fiduciaries, then, then your next question is, do we just hire a manager and have that one person report to us and delegate the responsibility to them? Or do we hire a management company? In which case do you have more expertise? If you, if you hire a manager that has a level of expertise you need, it's probably not gonna be too dissimilar from the fees you're paying to the management company, 'cause you're gonna have to pay a much more experienced, higher-priced general manager. So really, the reason why you hire a management company is because of our expertise, because we are now the, in the employment business, you're not, and, uh, and all the resources we bring to the table and all these various, you think about, you have all these different businesses. You have F and B, that's a business. You have Agronomy, that's a business. Of course, you've got the back of the house. The whole HR benefits, COVID is, believe me, it's been unbelievable this year. Do you really wanna deal with that? And so as you look through these various disciplines at these golf courses, they seem maybe from the outside in looking easy, but it's, it's a complicated business and one that, um, you know, these management companies bring a lot of resources to the table to help, to help the, uh, district be successful and spend your time the way it's, you know, best spent.
So how many times will I see you?
See me?
I mean, how, if things aren't pretty well, do you guys wanna sit down and ever have a conversation or have you just assume everything's okay when everything's okay?
So Matt Lindley, who's, you know, will come and visit, will come and see you, will be here no less than once a month. Uh, if you want him to attend board meetings, he'll be here. If you want him here more than that, uh, at least at the beginning, I mean, you tell us...
Once a month is fine, that's all I'm asking for.
We, we also have standardized communication that goes out to each one of our clients at the end of each month, that kind of is a recap of the financial, uh, past period, what's happening at the facility, any programs that are in process to keep communication levels up along with regular site visits from the regional operations.
Look, we, and I, we spend a lot more time too, these first six months, because there're gonna be changes. And, um, um, I guess the way we look at it too, it's our reputation also, we need to, uh, our, in our municipal space, our average client length now is 11 years. We're in the customer, repeat customer business. We don't wanna go out and keep on finding new customers. So the only way we do that is to perform. If we don't perform, we're out. And, um, and we believe strongly and we welcome you to call whomever you'd like on, on that side and check us out.
I'm good.
I have a, a big curiosity that doesn't necessarily relate other than it speaks to your management team. How did you get into Stream Song? I come from a resort and it's like, okay, they're big enough, why do they have a management company? And have you been there from the beginning or how did you get in there?
Yeah, um, it started as a personal relationship. Rich Mack from Mosaic, who's really the driver behind the entire Stream Song, um, connection or building. And the, conceptually, Stream Song was really modeled after Band and Dunes, Pebble Beach, some of the multi-course, um, certain type of architect, golf course architect, um, type thing. We obviously have been highly successful at Band and Dunes, so that helped. Uh, but what was, we got to know Rich and he got to know us, we were on the same page. And so he would never wanted it to be a flag, he wanted it to have its own brand, which is what we're used to doing as well with our various, and Pebbles the same way. And so, um, the relationship grew from that and, and these are relationships, these, uh, and it's, it's, and I don't know if you know or not, so they brought in, uh, Kemper Sports to run the golf and Interstate to run the hotel. We're now assuming the hotel operation as well as of January 1.
Okay.
So, and Keith, that's Keith's baby, so you know, how long have you been sitting? He's down here all the time, both John and Keith, so, um, you know, it's been, it's been a great relationship.
Well, that obviously speaks to you doing something right, that to be able to stay on board with a property like that and abandon, so...
I have to get back to the team group sheet that we sent you. Our group, we can, our member groups we consider as, they have to be satisfied. Those are our members and those are the te, the groups that we have here currently. Is there any reason that you could see that that would not fit into your philosophy as to how you want to fill tee slots?
I, I don't.
I don't. But at the same time, I don't know at 100% of exactly how your operations, so I think it'd be, can we make recommendations that might be more financially beneficial to the operation? But we've got a number of other facilities that have the, you know, the different groups that play, you know, the, it's the noon group, it's the dog fighters, all sorts of things that they get their special names. You have to work around them, but at times you can go to them and say, hey, we need a little bit of help because we'd like to get a new, bigger tournament out there. Can we move you around or some things of that nature?
Yeah, no, we understand that and we support that because there's times when we go ahead and say that the course has to be closed for a couple of days because we've got a two-day tournament. Significant value to the club, we need to do those type of things and we're, we can work that. We really want to, in our minds, members have to be satisfied because the last thing we can do to afford is to lose members. And the first, easiest way to do that is not satisfy them with the total tee times that they want. Well, plus you have 36 holes, where this really gets to be, you know, much more of an issue with an 18-hole golf course. And this is a perfect example. Clearly, this is what the board wants. So yes, the short answer is yes, we will accommodate that.
Just going to ask you a question. Did your, did your membership grow this year?
Yeah, slightly.
Okay.
Now, there's a reason. We also have, of course, we've got quite a few international that are having part-time coming down here this year.
Yeah.
And we've made special provisions for them this year. But yes, the membership has grown and we're doing good on 50% opportunities to the board. So there's a lot of good things going on, but we need to continue to grow that because we need the revenue in order to support our desire to have first-class operations. We, my mind, golf courses are the number one asset, something that we cannot afford to let them be anything but where people want to come. And that's what we're striving to do.
Craig, you're.
Oh, all right, sorry.
It's all right. I should have told you earlier.
I need that headphone.
I have a couple more questions, but I, I, when I visited facilities of all of you, I was quite caught up with, I thought, when I went to your facility, beautiful place, I thought it's, well, it, it has to work because we just, you know, we just get more money. But I was, I was impressed by the fact that it has nothing to do with what money's available, has a lot to do with the management and the philosophy of the management because no place will keep throwing money and the members there or the boards that are in charge of it would let it go. So that's, and I was quite, you know, I, I look at this place and I go, well, money can't be a problem. And they said, well, it is. I mean, you're not going to go in there and just, okay, well, that's going to cost the members another thousand. I mean, it's, I was impressed by that because I always thought, and that's shame on me for thinking that, but it's, because even people who have more money than I do worry about their money. And it's important to have the right one. And I got to tell you, I'm embarrassed by some of the figures you see from our company now, how, how that got to that. And I want to tell you that some of us have not, we've been complaining and, and our thoughts, and I think that's what I hear, we're not quite sure if the board wants to change some stuff if we had the support of you, but it sounds like we do.
Look, no one wants to fund negative operating results, period.
Okay.
And at any level, and, and that certainly would be, I assume is the case here as well. So that would be our objective.
Well, it was nice for me to hear that you don't like any surprises and that's important to me because we certainly get a lot of surprises here, the board supervisors. So just so we can work together, because ultimately the five male, female supervisors have got to run the place. And as long as we have a commitment from whatever management company, we have it picks our job better and easier. So it, I think that's all the questions I have.
Okay.
Yeah, one question. On your, on your five-year contract, is that negotiable as far?
Yes, the way we do it is it's a five-year contract, but at the end of year three, you can terminate for any reason. And the reason why we do it that way is that first of all, let's say we need to bring in a new general manager, a new agron, whatever, we need at least three years to say there's stability here in the jobs. And people, if you have a contract less than three years, this is just our advice to you, it almost sends a signal that this could be a turnover situation. But at the end of three years, if you're not happy with anything, for whatever reason, you can terminate the contract. But the reason why that works well for everybody is you're not also renegotiating every three years, which tends to start, would start in year two. So it's a five-year contract, can terminate, one-time chance to terminate at the end of year three. And we've found that's the best way for all parties to, to work an agreement that's not, that's, gives a level of stability to all parties involved, you, us, and the staff at the golf course.
Okay, thank you.
Got a question on food and beverage. What, what percentage do you see ideally is the right mix for à la carte service versus banquet?
It, it really depends facility by facility. I think here, getting some outside banquets is going to be critical because those labor percentages and the margins are typically significantly better in that area. We're also dealing in an environment where COVID has completely changed that line of business right now and you're probably 24 months before confidence in really sales generation comes back. You know, for this facility, it'd be an interesting question because some of it's going to be impactful to the membership base and, and kind of how we utilize your room and space because to go for some of the larger experiences, I would imagine we're going to have to, you know, utilize the full scope of, of your room. But if we were able to get to 50/50 at this location, I think we'd be good. A lot of our bigger banquet halls, we try to go to 70/30 mix because that's going to ensure, you know, about a 15 to 20% profit margin in the food and beverage department and it kind of helps out pay the bills in all of your areas and it helps support some of those à la carte amenity-based experiences where you can have a little bit more staffing level and provide a more customized experience. But it's going to be a slow build to that. It's certainly not going to be immediate.
But the more banquet you do, the better off you are, is that correct?
Absolutely.
I hope it's only two years away.
I think everybody that does what I do for money hopes that it's less than two years away.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Sorry, I had my back too.
Okay. Yeah, please call up to the mic and tell us who you are.
Charles Shields, resident. Topper, sometimes. My question is, is what would you recommend the operation be in our clubhouse? Meaning fine dining, a Friday night happening place? What, what do you see that would bring money into the club as opposed to catering to five or six members who want to, you know, have that little green thing on their plate?
I think from a key perspective, what we talk about for your facility and any of the facilities that I've been involved with that have a similar type of structure to here, it has to be a community center. So fine dining is an experience that is typically reserved for special occasions and/or weekend experiences and you just don't have enough of a resident base to execute that on a regular basis. More importantly, it alienates a lot of your golfing public. So I think a high-end casual experience that's approachable and can be consumed on multiple different occasions will be important. And then programming, we're going to have to do a lot of programming and add some different layers in to attract other activity outside of just the golfing public that is going to fill and consume one type of product and the rest of the resident base of 9,000 people that need some other activities, other draws to participate at the facility, which will be necessary to drive cover count and help bring more people in, more revenue.
Well, how would you compare, say the Blue Lagoon to our facility? They draw, they draw constantly, okay, because it's hamburgers, you know, beer, that type of thing.
Well, you know, there's got to be, there's going to be an element of comparison, but I, I think when we look at our competitive analysis and look at what's in the area, we have to do kind of apples to apples and I'm not sure we'd be able to have the same type of comparison because our overhead's going to be different, our structure's going to be different, and our consumer base, just by being a business entity associated with the golf course, has to be a little bit different. Does that mean that we can't have a great burger and an awesome beer special that's still profitable and draws? Absolutely. But I think that the overall environment is going to have to be branded to match the same type of experience that matches the club experience, that matches the curb appeal, that manages, ma, ma, excuse me, matches the, the community kind of demographic and what their need for consumption is in that space.
You, you guys had a slide up there and said that you would expand on our menu. Where would you expand on it?
That's in the programming aspect, not necessarily in your day-to-day à la carte type of experience. From, from a programming perspective and you're running specials and doing some different things, we'd probably get a little bit more focused, do some focused type of marketing and have a better understanding of who we're trying to appeal to and develop some programming that is targeted to people that currently aren't participating at the facility and that's where the expansion would come from.
If you're interested in reaching people that, that are within a five-mile radius, what, what types of marketing tools do you use?
So it'd be probably a combination of different things. First, we'd look at the local demographic and see age, you know, income, whether they're full-time residents or part-time residents seasonally, and then it goes tiered. So the best in areas like this still is email blasts, believe it or not. We are heavy in social media and making sure that that footprint's available to us. But the biggest opportunity that I see is the website development from a food and beverage perspective is poor. Your search engine optimization isn't great. I can type in dining restaurants in Sebring and, and our, our level of presence isn't where we think it would be. And that's something that on our sales and marketing team, your regional sales and marketing director would be able to improve pretty quickly because it's all about key placement and analytics that we have relationships on the backend to, to help that out. So we'd probably focus in that area first. We'd also go through your golfing database and who's not a member but has played here? Are we capturing their emails? Are we capturing their contact information? Do we have a dining database? Those are all areas that we'd probably look to see where we're at and then expand from there. And good old foot soldier, guerrilla marketing, stuff in mailboxes still works in certain places. It really depends on the demographic and who's in our area.
You ever tried discounts?
Uh, you know, you, you can do a discounting program. It's got to be part of the overall program and packaging. It depends on kind of what needs you're trying to fill. My philosophy in discounts in a dining experience is if they're going to come anyway and all you're giving them is a benefit of a cheaper price, then you failed what you're wanting to do. But if you're drawing additional covers or impressions or filling a soft spot in your time of day, then discounting is effective for you. So it's really figuring out what we're trying to fill from a white space perspective and then what the program is to fill that white space. And discounts might be the way to go, but not if the, all we're doing is capturing the same people that were coming anyway at a lesser value now.
So you wouldn't recommend that doing discounts with golf? In other words, buy a foursome, get 50% off your lunch as well?
It really depends if we're capturing the right amount of golfers as we should be. So that might be something that we would look to do if our capture ratio from a golfing perspective is poor, but without knowing the specific analytics of it, I couldn't tell you that that would be our approach or not. I think providing a product that wants to be consumed from a golfing customer is important. It's also understanding how your current non-member golfers are participating at the facility to better understand what their needs are.
Good morning. Bill Norcross, longtime resident here, almost 18 years here. I think everybody recognizes the, the problem here and, and as you were alluding to, the 78% of labor cost, I guess that's what you're talking about. That's extremely high. I understand that. But from my membership information that I get feedback and talk to other people, they're very satisfied with the golf conditions out here. We have an excellent greenskeeper here and he's done a wonderful job. It's, it's, it's 100% improvement from what I first got here. Okay, now the white elephant, and that's the restaurant. And it's, it's a shame because we have such good facilities here. We have parking, we have a new building, we have a million-dollar kitchen, we've got some help there that, that is really, really good, but something is missing. And that's where I think that the membership and the board is looking to fix so that we can get people in here, attract them. And you say, send envelopes or canvas or whatever. They do send out emails, but somehow the people don't realize there's a restaurant here. They think it's a nursing home, you know, and it's golf and it's, and that's the elite people. You've got to attract these people in here. Why go down to a restaurant? I told the story a million times. You go down to a restaurant, Outback, whatever, you can wait an hour and 20 minutes. For what? Somebody's got a discount card? That's crazy. I'd rather come in here and enjoy a reasonably priced meal, not a $31 steak, which is on the menu, but, you know, so that you can have people on various income levels enjoy the food and the camaraderie. So I think that's my thought is the fix the restaurant. I think you're going to be a lot better off. Thanks.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, any other questions from the board? No? Unless you have any closing thoughts, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. If you need anything or want more information, anything. Thank you.
We used to have, Indiana also, and we would chat a lot.
Oh, yeah? Sure. Well, we're those groups there. Worried about that, we already know.
Number two.
I like.
Yeah. Makes sense. They'll have to call. They should do a call to order, I think.
Yeah, they probably do.
Okay, we will resume the meeting. We're now getting a presentation from Indigo, who probably knows the property better than anybody else in the room. So I will turn it over and let you go ahead and lead the way.
All right. First of all, can anyone, can everyone hear me? Can't tell if this is on or not. Okay, great. All right, so, well, thank you supervisors. Good morning, it's still good morning. We appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today. My name is Tony Chancey. I'm senior vice president of Indigo Golf Partners. And let me introduce my team that are with us here today. We have, of course, Brian Rhodes, who's our regional director of operations. We have David Evangelista, who's our regional director of marketing and sales. We have Tom Bamwart, who is our national director of food and beverage sales. We have Mike Stevens, who is our regional director of agronomy. And we have Mike Lemire, who is our GM onsite. Our entire team is here today. First of all, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. We've had a great relationship, I think it's about 15 years now, between Kitson, Billy Casper Golf, and of course now, Indigo Golf Partners. That says a. That says a lot about the relationship that we've had, that was been able to last as long as we have, and of course, the fact that we're here today and that we're presenting in the same manner as the other management companies tells you that we don't take this for granted. We understand that it is your responsibility as a board to look in the marketplace, to get the best management company you can for your operation, and so we respect that tremendously. I will say that as, as Supervisor Otelling mentioned, we are the incumbent, so obviously we have information that the other guys don't have. We've been in the saddle now for quite a period, quite a long period of time. Their proposals, like our proposals would be if they were the incumbent, don't always have every, everything that's going on at the facility in the consideration because they're not there in the saddle. So you may see things like huge cuts in different departments, an idea of cutting salaries, for example, things like that, to get to specific numbers. We can tell you that in our time here, that we have gone through the expense lines, line by line, year after year, to find the best and most efficient way to operate. That's been our mantra from day one. We don't believe in going backwards in salaries. We believe in building a strong team. We know that compensation is important, and going backwards can only mean something that's gonna be detrimental to the operation. So you will not see that in our proposal. You will not see gross cuts on the expense side, especially on the golf course, where we feel as though, given the local market, has, has said to you that your operation right now is met with a 98% favorable rating in the public. And I would say that even though that that is a public rating, I would say your membership, for the most part, has very similar thoughts about the operation. So in our minds, we're not gonna go backwards that way. You will not see that in our proposal. I'd also like to say that when, when you're looking at us, and I think it's important to note this, our contracts, in our contract, for example, or our proposal, we're putting skin in the game. The other guys are not doing that. We're saying, we're willing to put our money where our mouth is, so to speak, and actually say, we will not do any worse than a specific number, and if we do, we're willing to pay you back. That's not, that's not happening with your other proposals. We're the only guys doing that. And it's also the case when you engage with someone, you're always looking at, okay, what's it gonna take for me to get out of this situation if I wanna get out of this situation? Well, when you look at proposals and you compare those, the other guys, no one is letting you out of their contract in less than two years. That's their deals. And even the one that's allowing you out in two years, they are going to do that under certain specifications. We're not doing that. We're saying six months. If you don't like us for whatever reason, or you don't feel we're operating or meeting your expectations, you can get, you can tell us and give us a six-month notice and we'll leave. And the only reason we're doing the six-month notice, to be honest with you, is so we could find homes for the employees who may be potentially displaced. So we're putting our mouth, money where our mouth is in this proposal. We're also taking, and I think you should take note of this, cutting our fees overall on an annual basis. Cutting our fees overall on an annual basis. I think that's very important when you think about what this relationship means to us. It's a partnership that we've had, as I said, for 15 years, and we want that to continue. So we're doing the right things to show you how much we wanna be here. And before I turn this over to Brian to go through the meat of the presentation, I wanna say one other thing. If there's one word to describe us, that I would like to use to describe us and our relationship with you, it's been the word flexible. We're not gonna say to you, when you come to us and say, hey, I want a different kind of menu, or something else, some other kind of menu items, or we want, we want different items that are priced less, or we want something specific in F and B, we're not gonna say to you, hey, that's our, that's our business, we're the experts, we'll tell you what we're gonna do. You're not gonna get that from us. If you have specific issues with the T-shirt, or how you run, or how, you know, the member services are handled, we're not gonna say, hey, that's our business, we're the experts, we're gonna work with you, we're gonna be flexible. That's what's given us 15 years of service with you through multiple different boards and supervisors, GMs, onsite team members, et cetera, the word flexible, and that's what we'll continue to be as we move forward in our relationship with you. So with that, Brian is going to, going to take over. We have, in our presentation, we're gonna do some comparing to other proposals. We took the time to go through everyone's proposal, line by line, and to put that comparison out here for you to see. We have nothing, we're, we're gonna be fully transparent with that. We're also going to show you what we're, what we plan to do going forward, so you have an idea of that. That's vitally important. And then, of course, we'll finish up with, with Q and A. So you'll have plenty of questions, I'm sure, for us. You know us, you know our strong points, you know the areas where we, we could be better in your minds, and we understand that. But that's the relationship that we've had over the years. Wherever we are, not living up to your expectations, we've been willing to sit down and try to figure that out together. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Brian, and he will go through the presentation, and then, of course, we appreciate the opportunity to answer questions afterwards. Thank you.
So as you can tell from the membership fees on the slide there, we have increased fees over the last seven years. There was a dip in 2017. I just want you to take notice of that because it'll be, we'll show you why in a couple more slides here. Golf revenues, our original projection, which we made back in April and May, was to do $10,040, I mean, $1,040,000 in membership revenues. Granted, we did this before COVID impact. We thought it would be gone by now. I normally like to start with rounds, just to give you some background. The majority of our, of the performers did not show rounds, and if they did show rounds, they didn't have a breakout of rounds. In fiscal year 2020, Sun and Lake hosted just under 47,000 member rounds, or 60% of the rounds were members. The average rate was $23.79 per member round. Just for a comparison purpose, in 2019, we hosted 38,000 member rounds, or 53% of the total rounds, at an average rate of $25.46. On our budget, the year, you know, we did $1,001,000 last year in membership dues. We did budget a slight decline this year, only because our membership was aging into new categories. We also ran a very aggressive 50% off membership program last year for new members. The conversion rate has been much higher than what I would have expected. We're 18 out of 35 right now have converted to new members, full members. We expect that to continue on as we move forward. We did have a price hike this year of 3%. Greens fees, they have increased over the last seven years. You can see 2017 was our high watermark. That was the year we had the lowest membership dues. So there is a correlation between member rounds and public rounds, as our membership is very active and like to play, and they should. Got a beautiful golf course, you should take advantage of it. Next slide, David. So on the performer, we had just under $1,001,000 in, in greens fees and range fees. Trune had a $53,000 increase on that line. Kemper did $98,000 decrease, but they did increase the membership line in, in the first slide. And Brown Golf has a $51,000 increase. Couple things that they may not take advantage when they're thinking of it, is it's easy to say that we are going to, you know, look at the course conditions, the ratings, and they're in great shape. The pricing around our competition is similar, so we'll be able to raise the rates. What they don't understand is we do shotgun six days a week here. Our number one selling time for the last three years has been twilight. And that's not because that's when the public wants to play, the members get to book first, so they take advantage of it. So we are, so if anyone has mentioned that the membership is cannibalizing rounds to the public, it is. And what we're saying is, we understand it, we want it to happen, you know, we know that the members had the first choice in booking, they are going to take advantage of the golf course and move forward. We're not blocking the T-shirt and not allowing the members to play and, and playing games to try to get more public play in to make us look better. We're doing what we believe is asked of us and what the membership wants. Now, Sunday is our best day. We do about 20% of our revenues for greens fees on Sundays. It's the only day we don't have a shotgun.
While we're here, I just wanna back up for clarity. I haven't been on the board as long, so I'm not sure I understand the correlation in your 2017. Membership was down and greens fees were up?
Yes.
And that's because?
What happens is there is more open tee times when the membership doesn't play, is down and they don't play as often. We have more open tee times that the public can take advantage of. So we've been able, through the years, and I've been able to chart it, that when the membership goes up, the greens fees go down a little bit. When it goes, the membership go down, the greens fees make up the difference. So we're able to continue on a, on a growth, and I think it's the next chart, David. Oh, sorry, I got one more before that.
Okay.
But yeah, I'll get to that.
Okay.
Pro shop sales. Everyone came in and they added a small amount of money saying that there's, they would sell more in the pro shop. Trune added 16,000, Kemper added seven, Brown Golf added $8,900. And then they all came in and said, we can also do it more efficiently than these guys are doing it. They've cut the cost of goods percentage really from about 68, 67, 68%. We're, we budgeted at 70.29. Now, we ran last year at 69% in sales that are just above what we had budgeted. Sun and Lake has a kind of a unique marketing mix, merchandising mix. We sell a lot of hard goods, clubs, shoes, balls, are very big sellers in the golf shop. Those items are low-margin items. So in other words, when we sell a set of irons for maybe $1,000, the, the profit margin is about 10%. That, that item may cost us $900, so when we sell clubs, we're running at higher profit margins, so their profit margins will probably increase. We do offer a membership discount. Mike?
10%.
10% on anything?
Yep.
All right. So any non-sale items, we offer a membership discount of 10%. Obviously, they probably didn't build that in there. That would also lower their cost of goods numbers or make, raise them. So we are very good at taking advantage of our national partnerships. We have 160 golf courses. We've leveraged those partnerships to our max. You know, some companies are slightly bigger than us, they may have a little better national partnership programs, but we're talking maybe a point or two at most. I mean, these, the companies we buy from are in business to make money. They're not gonna give it away. What's kind of unique about us is, like Tony said, we're flexible. We don't have someone at the corporate office saying, that's a good price on golf bags, we're gonna send every, every property 10 golf bags. We're able to pick the merchandising mix and what would sell at property level. So we're taking advantage of our national partnerships and agreements the best we can for the property and not for the company. Slide 10 for the revenue chart. This goes back to your correlation, Neil. The, this includes all of the golf revenues that we have. As you can see, we've increased steadily over the years. In 2013, we were at 1.98 million. We've grown to 2.45 million last year. So the gross margin, we've, we've seen that everyone, all the companies are pretty similar. No one's saying they're gonna drive revenues any higher than what we have them. They projected $30,000 is the most. When we say that and we take away, you know, the membership discounts and some of the other things, they might not even get there, right? They're gonna probably be right above the number we have or maybe less. So it's important to highlight this number because they're showing dramatic increases on the bottom line of golf. As Mr. Chancey mentioned, you know, they're taking it out of golf labor and golf maintenance. And I'll kind of point out a few things in the next slide. Golf labor, our, it includes all golf payroll and benefits for the golf operations, the pro shop, the outside staff, includes the whole maintenance department in the golf labor number, and 60% of our admin labor and marketing labor is allotted to golf labor. See, labor was not broken out by category on the financials, on the performers, so it's very hard to analyze. Typically, we run between 40 and 42% of maintenance labor for the whole property. So our whole facility labor is 42%. In the 18 and 19, we ran at 65% of our golf maintenance was in the golf, golf operations labor. So anytime you look at those numbers, if you're running the same as we are, it's 65% of that labor number would be what would be allotted to golf course maintenance, just so you have a quick, to do the math. The golf course, this is, aren't really laid out to be, they're not the old-fashioned golf courses that are back and forth, back and forth, where you can mow this green, go to this green, go to this green, and save labor time through transport time. They're built in a circle. We have to go around, we have more transport time. Obviously, if you're not new, if you don't understand the golf course, you won't understand that the transport time picks up every day that we're doing it. Also, we have different grass on the greens, so we have specific equipment for that grass. The courses on the, you know, between deer and turtle, we may have different heights of cut between the different grass. So it's not like we, we can say, we're gonna mow this hole, jump over to one on turtle. It just doesn't happen. Let's see here. Actually, I'm gonna stay there a little bit longer, David. The, just a few points. Our Director of Maintenance, Earl, and I don't think he was able to be here, has built a high-performing team. He's, both of our superintendents for the golf courses are back there. As Tony mentioned, they, you know, both of these guys live in the district, they have a wealth of local knowledge, they've built a great team together. We have built this program more about fixed labor, salary labor, than some of the hourly, based on where we are here. Highlands County was running at 3.4% unemployment rate last January. It's obviously went up from the pandemic, but we've always fought to get good hourly employees on property. In fact, we share our maintenance building with the district. And the district pays their employees a higher wage, they give them better benefits. So we lose quite a few of our hourly employees to the district. Our hourly mechanic, just this week, gave us notice, he's going to work for the district. So obviously, unless you've been here, you won't know that's a challenge. Maintenance expenses. As you can see, Trune cut almost $100,000. Kemper did add $57,000, but they had cut $138,000 off labor. Brown Golf cut $80,000. You know, it is impossible to drive revenues with poor, poor course conditions. I mean, if, if you've been through it before... I mean, if, if you've been through it before, most of the times when I see a dip, it's because, in revenues, it's because of course conditions. If we increase the course conditions, we can increase the membership and the golf revenues right back to where they are. We have earmarked about $1.35 million between the maintenance labor and the maintenance expenses to go right into the golf course to do that. As Tony mentioned, we are running at 97% or above. We're 97.7% in Golf Now and Golf Advisor ratings. Uh, we're 97.7 on deer, 97% on turtle. Highlands Ridge is 65%. The only golf course I could find in the immediate area that was higher than what we are was Southern Dunes. They're running at 98.4%. These averages are weighted a little more heavy for the first six months, but they go back for two years. Our, we really have not changed that rating in the last two years. We've been pretty steady, running right at 97%. So if we were challenged to eliminate the $100,000 Trune is going to eliminate, or even the 80 that Brown is going to eliminate, this is how I would, you know, if we were walking in, how we would recommend it. Go ahead, the next slide. They will tell you that, you know, they can do it through national partners and discounts. They can't beat our discounts and national partners by that much. Again, Earl is very good at using our partnerships and taking advantage of our discounts. I mean, we're talking, if there's $500,000, in a best case scenario for them would be $5,000, it's certainly not $100,000. So for, if we had to do it, first thing I would say, well, we'd need to eliminate overseeding because only golf courses that are profitable usually overseed. And overseeding will cost us net about $70,000. Now, that includes the seed cost, includes the outsourcing cost to put the seed on there, includes fertilization, includes pre-emergent, includes electricity for more water, and includes some sprays in case we do come up with some disease during our grow in time. We have to, we'll do more mowing, so we have additional labor on that. And then we have touch-up costs, and then usually we have to spray it out in the spring to add, you know, so those all add up. Adds up, and then we turn around and do about $15,000 of lost revenue while we were closed, between five and 15, depending on the days we're closed and the weather. And usually, the conditions are very wet and we're not allowed to drive on the fairways, so we've limited car traffic, so play is deterred during those times. So when we look at that, that adds into it, comes out about 85,000 just by cutting out the overseed. It's certainly not something we're recommending. I mean, I know, we can't take it away this year, we already put it out. So, but in the future, that would be, you know, when I look at these numbers, that would be the first place that our agronomist would start. So the second part of it is to stretch some chemicals, right? You don't do as many weed sprays, you don't do as many, you know, if we're going every two weeks on fertilizer or chemicals, we may stretch it to three to try to buy it out in a longer time. It can be done for a short period of time, it's not a long-term plan. So you can make it look good for a year or two, and then it's going to go down. We do it. We did it last year, right? If we analyze every expense, if we can save that expense and not put it out there, we'll do it, as long as it doesn't impact the golf course negatively in the long run. Now, we got lucky last summer, we had pretty good conditions, we were able to cut a little more off our maintenance expense than we had in the past. Another way to save some labor is to eliminate double-course shotguns. We do recommend this in the, only in the summer, and we very rarely have full-course shotguns in the summer. What we have is one golf course that's shotguns, quite a few players, and then we have like an 830 shotgun for 28 to 32 players. Those players would have a little bit of impact to 28 to 32, but we could turn that around to $5,000 to $10,000 worth of labor savings. You know, it's something that we did build into our forecast in the future, and I'll show that and point it out. It's not something that is, you know, has to be there, right? If we're told that we want to keep the way we're doing it, we'll do it. Mr. Norcross sent us this review on, uh, last Friday. It's very complimentary. It points out, uh, a lot of detailed work that's being done on the golf course. Like, I don't know if everyone can read that, so I won't have to read it to you.
Yeah, you don't get it right.
All right. Obviously, it points out the pictures that he came to. If you're going to cut labor, you're going to cut detail work. It's just the way it is. Golf expenses. Again, there's a 60-40 split in the admin and marketing. You know, 60% is allotted to the golf operations. Brown?
Since you guys complain about that all the time, is 60-40 the correct number, or is there a different number?
So, um, I believe that's done, that's done by your, your accounting team, and I think...
It's done by our accounting team based on what you told us to do.
No, um, those are just recommendations. I, I, well, first of all, let me get back to answer your, your first question. What's, what's the, what's the norm? I think where, where we could help is, you know, we have different golf courses that would like their P&Ls to look a certain way. We're not locked into a certain P&L. We can do it by department, okay, which is, I think, what Omar and team are trying to do when they split out those expenses. Um, we can actually, and I think, you know, he's taking a percentage of bills and so forth, and that may make, that may make sense at certain times of the year, but other times of the year, because utilities vary over the course of the year, that might not be exactly what it should be. So if you really want to get down to departmentalizing, in other words, what does the F&amp;B department actually do when you include all utilities or you include a portion of Mike's salary to F&amp;B, for example? Um, we can, we can do that and we can give you a P&L in that format, uh, which I think would be probably the most accurate, most accurate way you can do it. I think what Omar and team are doing, they're taking this average, you know, as an average, and again, over the course of the year, that, that might be close, it might not be, it depends on operations and so forth and where people are allocated within the operation. So that's how, that's how it works. Not every, not every customer, not every, not every client wants it that way because they look at the bottom right-hand corner of everything rather than the bottom right-hand corner of individual departments.
Well, let's put it this way. I know it's going to add up to 100%.
Yes.
So why don't you tell us the way you want it broken down so we can report it that way? Because I've heard you guys complaining from time to time that you don't think the numbers are correct.
Yeah, I think, I think when you look at our, our budget and so forth, that it doesn't always match up exactly because of that. And what I'm saying is, we can do that. Okay, so you can avoid the, it can, we can avoid the confusion or the differences very easily. It's not, it's not, it's not hard for us to do.
So if we go forward, we can do that.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
It's not a problem.
And that works for you, Omar?
That works for me, that's what we've asked from the beginning, was for them to do it rather than us. The only reason we stepped in was it was never being provided from the cash per side.
Okay.
Yep.
Will you, uh, you make sure that happens instead of us just talking about it? Or bring it up to the board?
Yeah, we, we'll do that immediately. I mean, assuming we are retained, obviously, we will, uh, we will do that immediately. And I wasn't aware that, that you'd been looking for that. If I was, I can tell you, we could have, we could have had that to you in no time at all, so, um, again, that's, that's something that we have done at other facilities.
And, you know, I hope it's not coming across of us complaining about it. It's just a little bit different when we're comparing what the normal industry averages are. As you saw in the Performas, that everybody started with, you know, they had one line, boom, 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 admin was all by its own, it wasn't split, marketing, same thing. It's just easier to figure out exactly where we stand and monitor the way everybody had done it, but it's, we have those numbers, it's the way we do it, and then we can just crank it out.
Just worry about your own numbers.
Yep. So the golf operation expense, as you can see, we came in at 364,000. Trune cut at about 8,000. Kemper came in 3,000 under, and Brown was 55,000, 56,000 under. So they've made significant cuts in the golf expenses. These are our general admin expenses, our sales and marketing, and our operating leases and others. Brown's has put their operating leases and others into the golf operation, I mean, into the G&amp;A expense. Just for clarity, the operating leases and others is the real estate tax, the P&amp;C insurance, which comes from the district, and the FF&amp;E, which is furniture, fixtures and equipment. So I can't see any company really providing any savings there. As you can see, three out of four of us are pretty even. You know, what's specific to Sun and Lake? We allocate $30,000 in the marketing expense for promotions. And that, you know, and 13,000 of those promotions are directly earmarked to the clubs. The Men's Golf Association, Women's Golf Association, the Ladies Golf Association. We do pay our point of sale provider, which some of the companies may trade. We do not trade. It just doesn't make sense at this facility. Golf Now bookings, they earn a commission, so they do get some, they take that out in some rounds they sell. But our Golf Now bookings here are very low off of their website. Our customers are trained and taught to go to our website and call the golf shop to book. And even in the future, we're planning on raising the rates on Golf Now's website to offset some of that commission fee, just to drive more traffic to our side of it.
Is there any real value in Golf Now? They're not adding very many rounds, are they?
The value in a lot of it is, I mean, we're only paying for the rounds they add, but there's extreme value in advertising, right? If you're up in Michigan or Indiana and you want to come down and you're doing a trip, you're going to do a search, read the reviews, see that we're 97%, call the shop or book and come on out. At least, they may not book directly, but it's in their mind. I've always looked at Golf Now as advertising. You know, even back when everyone was calling them the devil and they were ruining the golf business, if we manage it and you manage it correctly, it's advertising. It's an advertising expense. Now granted, if we're lazy and we let them do it and they sell all their own tee times, then it's on us. I mean, I've always, you've got to have some personal accountability there. But yeah, they do some programs that I disagree with, but, you know, it's, it's kind of takes the good with the bad.
Okay. What do you mean by, uh, point of sale providers paid $12,500?
We use Easy Links, um, suite, Easy Suite. It fits this property very well. They charge us a monthly fee. They would prefer that we would give them two, uh, eight rounds a day and they could sell it. And they would sell their own times and we wouldn't pay any of the 12,500. So if you look at the admin expense, if we were going to try, take that out, it would drop $12,500 off the top if we went there. Now granted, they would sell, they would get more than that, they would make more than that.
Well, how many rounds do we have booked to them a year that we're giving them $12,000 for?
No, we're giving them $12,000 for the software. So that's the point of sale software in the kitchen, that's the point of sale software in the pro shop, that's, those are your monthly bill. We have to have software to do that stuff. Tee sheet software.
Just so, just so the group understands, um, all of the point of sale software that are out there, you're going to pay a monthly subscription fee. That's what Brian's trying to say here, is that, uh, you...
Or you trade.
Or you trade. Or you trade for golf rounds, and, and most of the software providers have that provision. It's just a matter of whether or not, um, you want to allow them to sell those times on a daily basis, uh, at your facility. Some, some clients don't want to do that. We do have the capability, um, to limit when those rounds can be sold during the course of the day and how, and the rate. So there's some, there's some flexibility in doing trade, um, but again, some clients don't want it. Uh, so it's just a, it's just a client, uh, you know, preference more than anything else. But that price is what we pay for subscription fees for point of sale software, which you'd have to pay for any software. It's mostly for, uh, support as well with their stuff, so.
Are these rounds, uh, put in when they want them or what's available to us?
Yeah, so, um, you can, you can, um, you can, we, and we do, we do specify, you know, when, um, they can, they can put those rounds out. But keep in mind that those rounds will build up during the course of the year, and they're, they're going to want to use those rounds, so if we're too stringent on when they can use them, there'll be a glut of these rounds that build up and then we'll be forced to open up the floodgates to allow them to get those rounds out before the end of the year. So we want to make sure that we're, it's a, you know, it's a give and take process, but we've been pretty successful with it, uh, around the country, you know, working with them on what we can do on certain days and on certain rates.
Could that possibly be the reason why sometimes we have reverse shotguns and members go off number 10? Is that, and it works?
I'll ask, I'll defer to Mike on that one.
So, uh, in this conversation right here is, we are not doing that. We are not trading out for our POS system, so we are not falling into that guideline where we have to sell these tee times. We pay for our POS system, so we don't have to do that. That's how we currently operate now. What Mr. Chancey is saying is that if we wanted to trade it out, we could, but that's the situation we would be in if we did do that.
Well, good, that's, uh, we get a lot of questions and that kind of stuff, and it's nice now that I can tell them that's not the reason we're doing some of the stuff we're doing, so.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So after we analyze labor and expenses, we come into NOI. So remember that everyone was projecting at most a $30,000 increase. So Trune is projecting a savings of $134,000 between golf labor and golf expenses. Kemper is projecting $105,000, and the majority of theirs is all coming from labor. They did a 12% labor cut. Brown Golf is projecting $130,000 savings in those categories. You know, once marketing is adjusted and we talk, if we've even made any adjustments at all for the point of sale system, if they were trading out, we run efficiently as any of those companies that put up on the board. So it's just a question of what you're willing to sacrifice and what they're going to take away in the golf. I mean, certainly, we're able to do the same things. You know, if, if, if it's truly is, you know, we're, our task is to cut $100,000, we'll come up with ways to do it, but we don't want to come up with ways to impact the clientele, or we'll tell you how it's going to impact the clientele before we make those cuts.
Maybe, maybe you should note that you had an increase of 255,000 this year.
Of?
In the golf.
Oh, it's, I have the EBITDA line coming.
I mean, you're talking about 92,000. The golf course this year...
We went off of former numbers, but yes, golf course this year was very profitable. There was a couple of things that were probably moved around that should have been moved back that we, you know, we missed, and I'll explain those coming up here in the F&amp;B portion. But yes, we did have a very good year in golf, you know, last year.
And under plan.
We're going to hit the F&amp;B net sales now. We're the company that came in and we see the most ability here. I mean, off of 2018 sales, we kind of built the budget that we have. We're not going to get there this year. We know that. It's in the forecast. I think I forecasted out our food and beverage sales are going to come in at about a million 58. So you can see it, Trune and Brown and Kemper are all in those lines. Kemper was the only one that specified that they did a COVID impact. The other golf, the other companies did not. No. So even on cost of sales, you know, we had anticipated 36.24%. Trune came in at 34.8. Kemper came in at 36%, and Brown Golf came in at 33.73%. So at the beginning of last year, before the pandemic hit, we spent about 30 days that we were still closed for the renovations, and then we opened. Our dining covers were up 12% from previous years. We were showing some growth. Now, we needed to build... up 12% from previous years. We were showing some growth. Now, we needed to build on the banquet sales, which weren't quite there. But then the pandemic came, kind of kicked us in the rear. All the, everything's gone. We shut down for a couple of months. I mean, for at least a month, we shut down. So our sales, you know, throughout the years, we were 885,000 in 2015, and we went to a million two in 2018. One of the things to take note is that our members receive discounts on alcohol. And it's not happy hours. We, they receive discounts all the time. So a pitcher of beer for a member costs $9. If we're going to put it at industry standards, it would be $12. It's not something that we're recommending. I have all the math. I can do it for you if you want. But it comes in at 46%. The, the net bottom line impact in 2018, just on beer pitcher sales, would have been $24,000. So it is significant. And I guarantee that our competitors will either eliminate it or come in with, we'll do a pitcher of Miller Lite or Bev Light from 5 to 6 o'clock on these nights, or 5 to 7 happy hour, and then we go up. And that's the only pitcher price we're giving special. So it's one of those just to take into account.
Is there, is there, is that a problem?
No, not us. It's not a problem for us, right?
It's a problem for the bottom line.
It's, yeah, it affects the bottom line.
That's something we would have.
That's something that you guys tell us what you want, right?
Well, it's all according to who's, if you're trying to make a profit or not.
Correct. Absolutely. The decisions all affect the bottom line. I mean, every, every decision we make has, you know, it moves on down the line. It has a cause and effect. So if we run beer prices at that, you know, we can, you know, I can stand here and argue that we run beer prices at $9, we'll sell more beer. But you can argue the other way. If I sell it at 12, we'll be, we'll be more profitable, you know? Either way, it doesn't affect any of the cost of expenses. It doesn't affect our labor. We still have labor there. The only effect is going to be on cost of goods. But if you want to see the cost of goods number drop down, we just affect that, right? It's an easy, that's what, you know, anytime we talk cost of goods, it's, it's always one or the other. Because I could sell you a supersized candy bar that cost me a buck, I sell it to you for two, I run out of cost of goods at 50%. I made a dollar. I sell a candy bar for, I buy it for 33 cents, I sell it for a buck, I made a dollar, I made 76 cents. And I make less money, but I got better cost of goods. So it's, it's,
What would you recommend as a cost of, uh, cost of goods percentage? Cost of sales, whatever. What's the percentage we should be at?
We, I'm recommending that we'll come in at about 36%. We're on our forecast. We're about 32 on food. Our banquet sales will drive it down even further once they come back. Uh, and then our, our alcohol costs are running right around 40, 41%. Because once you, not everyone gets a member discount.
So you've got 36.24 up there.
That's what we budgeted this year. That's pretty accurate on where we'll end up.
Is that a good number?
I think it's a good number for this club, yes.
Okay.
I think just by two cents, I think it's a very good number, 36. I think Kevin's done a great job over the years with food costs. And that's part of being flexible and kind of giving the members what they want are those, those prices. So, um, if we're chasing a cost of goods number, you know, usually beer would be 28 to 30%. We're running it at 46% to benefit the members and, you know, kind of make the experience of the club better. So everything we're doing is with the membership in mind, with direction from, from you, of course. Um, but the goal is to make it, you know, a good, a good place where people enjoy coming and come often. Um, and cost of goods is something that we kind of give up a little bit and for the members' experience.
So going forward, I can see 36% is, that's your mark?
Good mark, yeah. That's a, that's a good mark for, for this year coming up. Keep in mind that we know, we projected that our banquet sales are probably going to be weak in 2021, just simply because we know that COVID is going to extend into a portion of 2021. And we also know nationally that it's devastated the banquet business. And banquet, and banquets typically come in at lower costs. So as COVID goes away and banquet business begins to build back up, you'll be able to see, you'll be able to see a positive impact on that cost number. In other words, it will come down. Uh, so that's important to just kind of think through that as you're, as you're looking at those numbers for '21 versus '22, '23, '24, and so on.
So the number for '26 and '21 is not the right number?
No, I'm saying it is for '21. I'm saying in the future, because you were looking, I think, also longer distance, longer term. And I think we can actually do better than that when the banquet, when the banquet business comes back. Because as I said, that comes at a, at a, at a higher margin. And the other thing that I think Brian was trying to point out here is that the other guys have numbers built in there, and they may not be aware of these kinds of discounts that we're extending, uh, on specific items. Uh, and if they are not, if those things are not built into those numbers, then likely there are one of two things that's going to happen. Either their number's going to go up, you know, cost, cost of goods that is, uh, or they're going to, you know, they're going to take away that, that amenity, you know, to you as a member. And I don't think that's going to go over very well.
Or they'll increase the prices, too.
I agree. But sometimes we, that I say is that you guys worry about more, we're, we're here to deal with the public. I can tell you raising the beer, $2 a pitcher probably wouldn't be very profitable, or very popular. But that's our job. We're the ones that's going to take the hit either way. And, uh, you know, I, I love the recommendations we get.
Yeah, and I think that
But our bottom line is we got
That's part of the problem. We do not get a recommendation to increase beer prices in order to make ourselves more profitable in there. That was never presented to us as being a significant problem.
And that's what, that's what, you know, we need to know.
That's a problem.
Because we're dealing with the public. We have to take the hits. And if I'm willing to take a hit, but I want a part of our, us, us five making that decision, not a decision you guys make. You can recommend it,
Correct.
But you bring it to us.
Let me just, let me just, um, let me, let me address Mr. Herrick's comment there. We, we never said it was a problem. Okay? We're not saying it's a problem. We're, what we're saying is that that is a, a member amenity that we have done through the years that we think is actually a good thing. We're just trying to compare numbers here when you're, when we're looking at the cost of goods, what, what we're throwing up there versus the other guys. I, I think it would be suicide personally to raise, to raise the cost of pitchers of beer. I think that's, that's ridiculous. So no, I don't think it's a, a problem, and that's why it's never been brought up. All we're saying is that if we were going to try and cut expenses somewhere, we're just illustrating what that amenity's value is. It would be, as Mr. Gilpin says, your decision if you want to do something with that. But we're not recommending to get rid of it.
I'm not saying that you, what I'm saying is that we have had meetings about our dissatisfaction with the performance of the restaurant for a year that I've been on the board. And at no time have we ever talked about the fact that beer sales might be a problem, or that alcohol sales is the prob, part of the problem, or part of the solution. If we should be selling beer at $12 a pitcher, maybe we should. And can we take the heat for that? Yeah, we'll probably take heat for that. But maybe we don't go $3. Maybe we go a buck, and now it's $10. That affects the tip of the server probably. But my concern is that we sat here and talked about the dissatisfaction of the restaurant and the profitability of that. And now we're telling us, these are issues that we could probably work on. Why didn't we talk about it earlier? That's my issue. Now to come in and say they didn't put them in their numbers, or potentially didn't put them in their numbers,
Correct.
And therefore, they're not comparing apples to apples. That's, that doesn't settle.
Well, just to be fair, if you look at the numbers across the board there, we're, we're pretty much all in the, all in the same numbers. So
Yes, the cost of goods.
And, and yes, so we have actually figured out a way to, to continue on with that amenity and still keep cost of goods in line with what the other guys are saying. So again, maybe it hasn't been brought up, and, and if it hasn't been brought up, it's probably because we didn't ever think that that would be a change that you would want to do. Because in our, in our minds, in the survey, as, as Mr. Gilpin has said, that would probably be not very well received. And while I understand you're trying to take the hits, and it's up to you to take the hits, our job, our job is to make it so other parts of the operation, we can, we can find places to, to save in other parts of the operation, so you don't have to, to take that hit. So that's, that's, that's where we've gone with, why we've gone, where we've gone over the years with it.
Okay, but the biggest hit that we take is to the overall amount of subsidy we have to provide for the operations. So that's, that's the hit we're concerned with. And we want to balance it with everything else. But we need to hear what the possible solutions are, rather than you guys assuming we're not going to want to take that hit. Because again, the biggest hit is, we subsidize it a lot.
Yeah, and I think, if you recall, when we, when we were asked to provide a budget to you on what would get us to break even, those, many of those things were taken into consideration as to what it would take to do that. And that's when that discussion did actually happen.
Throughout the next part of this presentation, we're going to provide some more recommendations in areas that you guys can, you know, decide if that's something we want to pursue going forward. It's something that we did forecast when we adjusted our forecast. Because yeah, I mean, we don't come to the meetings and talk about beer prices. And we should a little more. I mean, especially when I found out, you know, when we kind of were crunching every number in this book, I noticed it, and we discussed it. So I mean, we'll bring it to your attention. I can tell you the companies I worked for in the past, be the first thing gone, right? If a new company walks in, we walk in, there is no more alcohol prices, discounts. If we want to do a discount, we do during a specified period of time to try to drive business. Now.
You're talking about one thing at a time. You're talking about cost of goods, solids? We're done with that, go on to the next?
Correct. Let's go.
Let's move on.
Food and beverage labor. Historically, our labor has been 57 to 60%. The labor includes fixed and variable labor. We do have a, quite a few salaried employees that have a lot of seniority. And we also have, you know, it's 40% of this labor, you know, the admin and the marketing labor goes into this total also. It's hard to compare labor until you compare service standards, hours of operations, you know, overall. The easiest way to compare it is percentage, obviously. You know, you're looking at, we're still the highest at 58% in our original budget. It does come down. We'll go through some recommendations that we are making to drop that. You know, Trune is at 54%, Kemper's at 50, Brown's at 49. Couple of notes. We did decide to keep the staff during the renovation because the labor market was tight. So that really drove labor high percentage in 2019. Also, a little bit in 2020 because we were delayed a month before opening. We did keep the staff when the, when the restaurant was closed down. Uh, you know, on, we just reassigned them. So Kevin and the rest of the staff was either cleaning or mowing. That's when I said that some of our numbers may be a little bit skewed because we should have tracked it better, is the fact that some of our F and B labor was actually in, in maintenance and in clubhouse. Because we were closed, and then we went to immediately to takeout when we could do that. We did try to drive as much business as possible. You know, obviously, it's the longest two weeks to flatten the curve ever. No one, it's easy to look back now and say the decision was wrong. But at the time, it was a decision that most of our clubs made and what we recommend. We certainly did talk about it. Let's, food and beverage expenses. Again, with the expenses, they're variable. So the more sales we have, the more they're going to, you know, go up. Our number one expense is supplies. It goes down if we don't sell as much. You know, we do have $12,000 allotted for marketing in there. So if you look at that total, once you put those in there, we are about, even with Kemper, we're still slightly behind Trune and Brown. But we originally, when we forecasted, we forecasted more revenue. So we're running at 25.6%. They're running in 25 to 21%.
Let's go back a slide. 77% this year. Do I get an apology, or we screwed up, or my guy, we let it go, and it was a mistake, or anything like that?
Obviously, we put those staff members to work in other places. So that 77% is inflated, right? Because
I don't know.
If, if we have employees that work for a month mowing grass, it should have been higher in the maintenance department, and we did not transfer it. And that's on me. I'll take that heat. It's my mistake that at the time, you know, it was
The world laid off people, but we did not.
It depends on who and what the customer was. We did have a discussion and was told that the best way to go would be to keep our employees and reassign them. I did not have this discussion with the board. I had the discussion.
Well, I got to tell you, the way it was handled sucked. And that's for the record. The end result was even worse.
So, so yeah, um, I think it's important to note here that, uh, across the board in, in, in our company, um, uh, you know, we did furlough people. You know, we furloughed people, uh, we took that risk. And, um, you know, that we may not be able to get those people back. And in some cases, we didn't. That's the risk that you do take. Brian mentioned earlier that labor market was pretty tight. Um, now, of course, when COVID happened, yeah, uh, it loosened up quite a bit. But still, there's always the risk that you may not get people back. They may, they may go to other places. So you, and you end up having to make a decision. We were prepared to do it either way, keep them or not keep them. And the decision was to keep them.
Okay, I think the way last year was handled was very poorly, obviously. Okay? 58%, unacceptable. You know, you just, we're just glancing over that. So why would I accept 58% when the world is telling me the number is closer to 50?
I do have that number dropping, obviously, in our forecast.
You're hoping it goes down from 77, you can't go higher.
It's dropping to 58%, right? It's what we budgeted to begin with. You know, we do have some things, some operational issues that I will point out that do drive labor. They drive labor higher. I mean, it is easy, we'll get into it here shortly. I knew this was coming, obviously. You know, it's part of our future plans. And I do want to point out certain things. You know, the whole world is shrinking their menu. You know, our, every casual restaurant's got 40 to 50% less items because they can do it more efficiently. They keep the higher-margin items on there, they're best sellers, they eliminate the slow sellers, and they eliminate anything that takes extra kitchen help. When we opened up last year, we expanded the menu and we added additional cook, line cook, because of that menu size. Now, we're not as efficient in that way, and it's a decision that we can talk about going forward. And it's, you know, do we want to scale the menu down and then be more efficient and have lower labor costs? Or do we want to keep the menu where it is and have higher menu satisf, member satisfaction? The number one point on the member survey for our food and beverage goes was service levels. The number two was menu options. They wanted more menu options. And it was a close. So obviously, I'm skipping ahead here on slides, but that's fine. Our service levels have increased dramatically. We went through a lot of training, staff-wise. We're giving out comic cards to everyone. We're doing, encouraging Yelp reviews and any kind of reviews altogether. Mike's got a stack of several on his desk. They're 98% positive. And the ones that are positive are easy fixes. You know, it's the idea that somebody wanted noodles swapped, and we didn't do it for the schnitzel. That's, you know, granted, it was a communication error on our part, because the server should have said, let me check with the kitchen to see if they have those noodles before, and come back to you, rather than serving something that was different than what the person ordered.
I think we could shave that 58%. Like, to your point, sir.
Yeah.
Uh, to shave it, though, some things would have to change. Not drastically, but the limited menu, uh, smaller menus, some of the hours of operation. And that, again, what Brian was saying, that's what you're seeing across the industry. People are kind of hunkering down and streamlining their processes. They're not, uh, they're not operating 100% like they would pre-COVID. So that number's in there. But I mean, with the direction of the board, we can certainly make, take measures that would decrease that number to 50%.
Under ideal conditions, what should the number be? Under ideal conditions, what should the number be?
Ideally, I mean, high 40s.
I'm sorry?
High 40%.
40s?
Yes, sir.
So that should be our goal?
Now, are you taking into account the, the split for the admin and-
If you're asking my opinion, I'd say high 40s, based on what I know. So I'm not, I don't live like Brian does every day, but-
Is that our goal?
So, so what Brian just tried to say there is, is if we, and Tom is quoting based on what, how most of our clients like the expenses split, or not split. Here, we take some of the admin expenses, and we allocate them to F and B, so that number actually ends up being a little higher. So I'd say you're probably as much as 5 to 10% higher, so you're probably in the 55 range, to give you a 50 to 55.
That's not in that number, right?
Yeah.
Which number? The admin. Not in that, the percentages that I'm quoting has no admin in it, correct?
58 and 60 should, is there admin?
Yeah, yes.
So there's 40% of the admin labor and marketing labor.
Yeah. So there is, there is some, based on this facility, it's going to be a little bit higher because of that. So when the other guys quote you a number, if they are not taking that into consideration, where expenses are being split and sort of allocated based on department, then their numbers are going to be way lower.
What, they all have split?
Did they put this?
Omar put all puts in.
All right.
So 75 divided by 1,344 is 58%? Huh?
What was your number?
85 divided by 1,344, that's 58%, right?
Yes.
Right.
Well, the admin's another 147,000. What are you guys talking about?
No, that's G and A expenses, that is just the expenses. For example, it could be printers, office equipment.
So what is not in this, what is in this number?
The labor, it is in the-
It's all in the number. The 58 includes all of that, okay?
So do the other groups.
Correct. The other groups are, it's comparing apples to apples.
What I was, what I was trying to, what I was trying to, to, to help you with, is that we don't always allocate expenses from other departments into food and beverage at our other facilities. So, and, and not, nor do a lot of clients look at it that way. So when Tom is quoting you a number in the 40s, that number is along, you know, with that into consideration, not, not the way we do it here, where we include some labor and expenses in F and B from other departments, okay? So, when you look at that 58 number, and you say, what, what should that be? You know, our, our goal in that area would probably be somewhere around 55, because of the way we allocate expenses here. Okay?
Okay, so you're saying that, that number, that our goal should be 55%?
Yeah, in that ballpark, yes, all things considered. As, as we do more banquets, I just want to bring this up again. As we do more banquet, you're going to see the number go down. That's, that's a big part of how you can reduce, you know, labor costs, because that labor typically comes in at a lower cost for the revenue that you're generating. So that'll help bring that number down some. We'll see, what we normally will see in future years, '22, '23, '24, assuming we're past COVID, in '21, it's going to be, you know, where we, where we've allocated it. So, to give you an idea.
Let me, let me finish the equation, if I could. I'm probably jumping ahead on your slides.
It's okay.
So the other costs of running the operation would be what percent?
What's the expenses side?
I got 36 cost of goods, I got 55 for labor.
I think we had 25% for-
I'm sorry?
We had 25% allocated for food and beverage expenses.
25%. Isn't that the right number?
It's historically-
It's in the ballpark with every competitor, for the most part. It's what we've done historically. Obviously, you know, we can always do some cuts in there, but, I mean, we can run it, it depends on the operation, right? I can run at 15, 16% at small operations.
I'm sorry?
We can run at 15 or 16% at a small operation, grill, stuff like that, but something like this is going to be 20 to 25% would be my guess. It's again, the same thing, we're talking, using industry standards, and trying to calculate the extra percentages of the admin on there.
Here's my point. You've given, if you add up 36, 55, and 25, you come out with 116.
We are showing a loss.
So you're saying that we should operate at a loss of 16% of revenues in food and beverage?
That's what we budgeted this year. That's what we, we did at loss.
We budgeted this year. I'm saying, is that what we should be at?
No.
That's the best we're going to get?
No, it is not. We, again, we will, as the business changes, when we get through COVID, and, and we, you know, we, we're, you know, we're able to do more banquets, you're going to see that number, you know, you're going to see that number get much better. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, hold on. At the end of the day, the, the only number that matters, if you want to look at it, is, if you want to look at it from a business standpoint, is what, what margin are you generating? Not every business, this is not something that's national across the board. It depends on the operation. If you want to run a highly profitable F and B business, then there are certain things that we're going to do, or that we would do, in order to generate a higher profit. What does that mean? It could mean different hours of operation. It could mean higher prices. It could be less quality in the food. There's a whole gamut of things you could do. But if you want it to be in a member amenity, okay, and you want top service, and you want the best cuts of chicken, and steak, and so forth, and you want $9 pitchers of beer, and things like that, then yes, your margin is going to be less. But keep in mind one thing. At many clubs around the country, F and B is looked at as an amenity. Most, a lot of clubs operate at a loss in F and B. And why? Because it's generating membership sales. They understand that that's a loss leader to help you generate membership sales. So if you come in, and you, and you're trying to, you know, increase the membership, and the membership has a phenomenal experience in F and B, they're more likely to join. The same way, when you start cutting things on the golf course, you're not going to encourage people to join, you're going to discourage people. This is a revenue issue. It's not an expense issue here. It's a revenue issue. We need to do things to get more people interested in joining. We need to do things to get more people interested in playing more. So, cutting expenses isn't the way to do, isn't the way to go about it. That's been proven time and time again in the golf industry. It's a horrible way to do it. The way to do it is to keep the, the, the member amenities in a, in a good place, to provide some encouraging things for people to want to do, to have a nice cut, to have a nice presentation, maybe slightly increased prices on, you know, periodically, because that's just the way things are, because they cost more. But do it that way. The overall bottom line is what we really want to talk about here, as I think Mr. Hoteling mentioned. It's all part of the membership experience. Some things we're going to give up a little bit on, to encourage people to want to join, and to encourage, and to encourage them to want to be, to want to patronize. We've got, we've got to get it through banquets. We've got, that's where we're going to be able to increase the F and B operations profit. It's in banquets, okay? If we go and start messing too much with à la carte dining, your dining, you're going to get complaints, a lot of them. Okay? That's not the way to go about it. That's not the way to go about it. And that's what we have reflected in our proposal.
Didn't, wouldn't your 23 pro forma have shown a significant increase in banquet?
You want to answer that?
Uh-
I get, that's where I'm at.
Understand, I, I don't believe it was in that.
...loss under this current proposal for the first year.
Yep.
And we go to 120,000. Only a 60, you still show 120,000 dollar losses in the third year. But yet, I would assume that we had significant increase in banquet.
Correct. When we put the pro forma together, we use the same banquet, I mean, the same platform that we had before. Obviously, there wasn't a ton of things. It's, it's something that we probably missed, and we should have increased those on, that we did not show the growth in there appropriately. Now, we are turning around during this proposal, and showing some, you know, as Tony mentioned, some ideas on where to, to make some changes and modifications, to, to increase, and then start that moving along. I mean, if you go from a $224,000 EBITDA loss to 160, that's significant. Then go from 160 to 120, or to 100, and then move forward that way. We, that's really a, a very steady plan to move forward and increase, and slowly eliminate that debt, right, in the hole. We want to get better. If we make drastic changes at once, it's not going, it's not going to be well-received. I mean, obviously, you know, I know that we point out at some points in the past, you know, when we run Lake Ashton, 36 holes, not even the golf courses, that these are, our membership rate is $6,000 per couple, 4,800 for a single. And, you know, it's where it is. It doesn't offer the amenities that Sun and Lake has. And there's some efforts there. I know that we look at golf, and we say, well, it's profitable, we need to work on the restaurant. It's a mix together to get the perfect product. You know, we can't just say the restaurant's easy to fix, because it's not. I mean, if it was, it would be fixed. I mean, ultimately, we're looking at building that plan and growing the revenues and moving forward. I mean, we've had several bad years in a row with banquets. 2018, it was supposed to be renovated, so we didn't sell anything. In 2017, 2019, it did get renovated, so that impacted sales. 2020, we've been hit with COVID. I believe the banquets are there, just like I believe we can get a good 8 to 10% increase on à la carte dining. But it's, you know, we did not, I did not project them going out in the pro forma. You know, we didn't, didn't want to come in here and just bid, oh, it's zero, and it's easy, and we haven't been doing anything to make it better, because we have. I mean, it's easy to come in here. If we bid, we'd have bid profitable, right? If we're on the outside going in, we'd have a profitable bid, zero to profit, you know? And then when we find these things out, after three months of being here, we'd be like, well, we didn't know about this, we didn't know about that. And we may be sliding you some new budget amendment addendums, and things of that nature. Or saying, you know what, I understand that you've always had that membership discount. It's not going to happen. You know, it's, we're the experts. We're going to do our job, because we're held to this bottom line. And that's not the way we operate. We're flexible. We want to, you know, I believe, to get better, it's easier to get better and, and continue to rise, because it's, it's easy to cut everything once, and then after a year or two, we get bad conditions, and it just drops off the table. And then you're rebuilding again. I'd rather see like we had with our membership line, with our growth levels, that we continue to grow. You know, obviously, in those growths, there was no 10, 12% increases in membership dues to do it. I mean, as I said, at most of the clubs that we operate, you know, we may be making $200, $300,000 in golf, losing $2 in, in, in food and beverage, and we're profitable by 100,000. But all those decisions are made going forward on pricing, and how we're going to get there.
So, also, keep in mind that, you know, with COVID, it's a little bit of a moving target, right? Weddings typically book, nobody, nobody books a wedding inside of six months, or maybe even nine months. Those things are a year out or more. So with COVID unresolved at this point, it's hard to project. I think the point I would want to make is that, as that subsides, banquets will build. And that will, that will increase the profitability of F and B naturally. When that's going to happen is a bit of a moving target. And if you guys know better than, if you guys know, let me know, because I can't figure that one out yet. That's why you may not see that as, as high in '21. Because keep in mind this, we're really only a month away from probably the, the, the last part of the booking window for a wedding, a year away, the beginning of '22. So, again, as I said, when people book for weddings, it's a year out, for the most part. On occasion, a little bit less, but not much. And so, until that whole thing is resolved, I can tell you, across the country right now, brides are very reluctant to, to, to book, because they just don't know. And even in places where you can actually do a banquet, which isn't everywhere, by the way, they're finding out that the numbers that they wanted to, and people that they wanted to invite, are still reluctant to want to be there. So, that's a process that's going to take time. What I'm, what I'm trying to point out is, as it does, you know, resolve itself, you're going to see profitability naturally increase as there's, as the interest in banquet come back. Okay, Brian, let's move on.
We pretty much talked about NOI, current and future plans. Obviously, we make plans and strategies. We know they're going to change. It depends on the results we're getting. We missed budgeted revenues by $455,000 last year. We missed the bottom line, the bottom right-hand corner, as Tony likes to call it, by $21,000, of which we incurred a month without revenue, a month without, from renovation, and $19,000 of cost overruns. We are willing to adapt and move forward. It may not, you know, obviously, it's easy to say, well, this is the part dragging us down, this isn't. It's the bottom line, it's the whole picture of where we are, is we're coming in. Now, obviously, the standards have been raised. You know, there is a desire from this board to get lower and lower. The history of this property, the lowest EBITDA we've ever done was 198,000, and that was back in 2018. Other than that, it's always been very consistently funded. And I'm assuming that was, you know, at the board's direction, and what they were looking for, and how they were operating. So, in that point, yeah, we're, I'm going to come through here now, and make a few points on how this year, when we know that some of our revenues aren't going to be there, operational changes that we'd like to make, to get to the point where I think I forecasted for $160,000 negative this year, and it gives us something to build on. Membership is the lifeblood of Sun and Lake, right? It's the people around here who own the homes are there. It's the driving center of this community. Our Canadians accounted for a quarter million dollars in membership dues last year. The Canadian border is still closed. The Canadians can fly down here, and either have their car shipped, or rent a car, or buy a car, but it's hard to do. It's, it's much more on them. We, as mentioned earlier, we scheduled a small decrease in membership dues, just because we knew our memberships were aging into the 80 and the 85 categories, which were under, which bring in less revenues. We know where we stand with the memberships. We're projecting, you know, $950,000 this year. We've collected 862,000 as of right now. Just for comparison purposes, we brought in over $100,000 from December 11th to December 31st last, last year. So if the people of Snowbirds travel and they come down, we're going to exceed the membership forecast. But we took a very conservative approach. We talked about the Canadians. The marketing plan has four programs in there. It's been handed to you all, where it specifically targets how we're going to generate the money to get to that point. There's SMART goals in there, and what we're going to run, how we're going to attack people inside the gates, for resident socials, outside the district, where we're looking to add. Couple things about this neighborhood. We add 42, we're averaging 42 new homeowners a year, for the last three years. 2020 has 74 new homes being built. The real estate market is pretty hot. Now, National Golf Foundation will give you about 10% of people play golf, and about 5% of those are active. So if you added 100, we're looking at, you really only added five members, according to their notes. I believe that statistic is low here. It's one of the main things of why you move into Sun and Lake, is you're a golfer. It's a nice, active community, and you can move forward. It's very, you know, it's a beautiful place to be. And that's part of it. But you can see that we'll still have homeowner growth, that we will obviously target right away, and move forward. We did run a Facebook program for, for memberships last year, last spring, and used a look-alike audience, up in, targeted the northeast states in Canada, just for some awareness. It helps us in membership drives, but it's great for the awareness of the community. Because, I mean, if you're looking at that, you like the golf course, you look at the home prices, you may come down here. You know, obviously, I believe, birds of a feather flock together. People in this room will be moving forward. You know, they're going to have people that look like them, act like them, come here and live. So, when we do daily fee current forecast, this category is always important. It's more important this year, because we have targeted a slight dip. So, we're looking to drive golf revenues. I think we've got about a 65, a $70,000 increase year over year- year over year from last year. You know, current projection is similar to 2018. I know that, I was speaking to the person that runs Tanglewood Hometown America, they went, we have a couple golf courses that operate under my control, so I was talking to their district manager last week, and they're a little concerned with the Canadians traveling to Tanglewood, especially the RV parks, because you don't ship a, an RV down. Daily fee marketing, just some notes about the pandemic. Rounds have increased about 10% over the prior year. Memberships at rounds have increased about 15%. So obviously, members are playing more than the public is playing. We have noticed that a data on our utilization of golf courses, any high utilization golf courses have not grown that much. And any low utilization golf courses are having record years. And you wonder why the golf courses that are busy aren't growing? It's single-use carts, blocking additional tee times, there's less product availability, the members are playing more. So on golf courses like Sun and Lake, it's more of a flatter line there. Like I said, we're kind of having a direct correlation with membership rounds and public rounds. Now, to offset that, we've taken a few steps this year, we rented some additional carts, we took full advantage of what the contract said, and we rented additional golf carts, so we can offset it, and we hopefully will not have to block, we will still, you know, obviously, we encourage double riding, but if someone doesn't feel comfortable, they're not going to do it, we want them to be out there. You know, we have not, have we kicked in a fee yet, if they ride alone? Yeah, I didn't think so. Some of our facilities are charging extra, you know, a $15 cart fee if you, if you choose to ride alone, to offset some of the costs. We have not done that here. We have identified in the marketing plan four areas to target and drive rounds. One of the new areas that we haven't done in the past is day trips. Our data is showing that people will take day trips, or even an overnight stay, and they'll travel four hours. You know, the guys aren't flying down from Michigan anymore, but the guys from Orlando will come down here, play 36 holes, have lunch, and go back home. So we're targeting Sarasota, Tampa, Orlando, Lakeland heavily in Facebook, because it's a cheap, easy way to target them. And I believe it's with, with our reputation and the course conditions, we can certainly drive rounds there. F and B revenue, as I said, we won't get to the $1,003,000 this year. It's really because of banquet-based, we've, we've forecasted $1,050,000. This will happen. You know, our banquets historically are 33% of our revenue, we're down about 67% in our budgets. There is some good news, we're having three weddings in the next three weeks. The parties are smaller than what they've been, what would normally be, you know, we'd have 150 average, we may be 75, but at least people are starting to take advantage of it and move forward in bookings. If you talk to the industry leaders, they're, they're assuming that as soon as COVID is gone, and the impact is gone, banquet business is going to explode. Now, obviously, we didn't project that in our numbers, but I believe it. I mean, if you're gonna get married, you may be putting off getting married, but you're still going to get married. Some people more than once. À la carte marketing, this is the majority of our business. You know, obviously, our survey told us, you know, an increased service level, increased dining options, that's where we spent our time. Mike and David have been working on several areas to identify, kids eat free, resident nights, local community nights, driving the business in here. Our Facebook program has grown huge over the last 12 months. That is a great sign, is we're able to reach those customers, either through grassroots pro, you know, which doesn't cost us anything, or, you know, a boosted post or an advertisement, but at least, you know, they've already said, we like you. I mean, we've grown, the F and B has grown about 25% in the last year, and golf is about Banquet marketing, obviously, banquets are slow, but we're taking this time and we're building our plans. We're moving forward, all our marketing collateral has been updated, Wedding Wire has been updated, that's our number one site where we get leads from, based off of, for Go back. There's, we use a customer relationship management program, so we're tracking inquiries. The more leads that we have, according to salespeople, that's the number one thing they wanted to see, according to regionals and guys like me, I want to see a high closing rate. But we're tracking all that, we're tracking objections, so in case we can, in the future, go to you and say, you know what, we're getting objected here because of price, or we're getting objected here because of policy, can we make changes there so we can drive more revenues? The data is secure, it's not all on one person's computer, it's in the cloud. If we have personnel changes, we can still get it. I can access it from my office, Mike can get it at any point in time, obviously, Jessica works in it daily. Sebring is a nice community, it's very small, a lot of it depends on who you know to get deals done, especially golf outings, things of that nature. Our staff has been going around dropping off coupons in the last three months, you know, dropping off menus, saying, hey, we're going to drive our business through grassroots. Our GM, Mike Lemire, is a board member on the Sebring Chamber, he will be the board chair next year, so I'm expecting to have the Chamber of Commerce outing out here. Right, Mike?
I haven't asked a question in a minute. What is, the staff is knocking on doors and calling?
We're going around to businesses and handing out coupons and menus, trying to drive that lunch business, saying, hey, we have takeout if you want to use it. You know, and what we're really trying to do is establish a relationship.
No, that's good, I didn't realize we were doing it. How long have we been doing it?
Uh, no, we've been doing it for a good 90 days.
It's probably even a hair longer than that.
90 to 120 days?
Yeah, 90 days is probably pretty close.
Who's been doing it?
General staff, Ron, Ron, and a couple other people, yeah.
Ron.
What are they handing out?
The menus, some coupons to come into the, use them in the restaurant. You know, ultimately, while it's nice to drive the daily à la carte, and that's what we're trying to do, the, the real goal is to get, to drive banquets. You know, so if I open up and I come to you and you're in your business and I walk in, in the old days, I would give you cookies, right? Drop off cookies, it's a great thing. We start talking, I'm like, hey, do you do a Christmas party? You know, have you looked at us? Come on out, I'd like to show you the facility.
On the coupons, is there a way to capture, to know if they're coming back and get that information?
Yeah, I mean, you could capture the first time, but, I mean, it's hard to capture subsequent repeat times after that.
Somebody's coupon, do they have to like bring it back in?
Correct, yeah, absolutely.
So have you gotten any back?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. A lot of, a lot of the folks, you know, right up Sun and Lake Boulevard, there's, I don't know the exact number, but there's several businesses right up Sun and Lake Boulevard, including the hospital, and a lot of those folks are, are the folks that we target for, you know, coming in to have lunch, so they don't have to go very far, so.
That's a, a great thing that we're doing, but again, I think we're all getting to focus on, that's a great thing to do, and we find out after three months. And that's what I've been preaching, if you can.
Correct, there's one thing through this, through this process, that I know I've had talks with several team members here, is communication. We need to, we need to be able to say, this is what we're doing, this is, you know, the result.
That's right, Brian, we, Brian, we said that for three years, and I know of, and it's not working. I think that's a great idea.
Okay, but on this point, I can tell you, Mike has reported that as part of his staff report at the board meeting, I've heard it.
That, that I didn't see it, but I, I didn't see it.
That was, that was one of the reasons why we, why we went to weekly reporting to you guys, so you can, you can see the marketing programs that we have out there and some of the effectiveness. And I know that you guys are busy, don't always have time to read every one of them, but I would encourage you, it's, it's probably a five or 10-minute read, and then if those things generate any questions, you know, flip those back to us quickly, we'd be happy to, you know, address them. But we've tried to put a lot of information in there just weekly now, so that, you know, we've been doing that for a while, so you guys would be informed.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if Mike can confirm this, I, I get, I don't get, and we're working on it, Andy and Mike are doing a good job, but for some reason, I don't get it. But I'd appreciate, uh, because, you know, I have an iPad, and I'm not a genius, so I'm on an iPad, I still got a flip phone, you know, so you're talking to somebody.
You know, it'd be great, if, I tell you what, if you walk into Mike's office and we send something to you and see if it's, if it's working, if it's not working, then we'll try to see if we can help you fix it.
And they're working on that, but I, you know, and I, I'm not claiming to be anything close to a genius, but a lot of things go on that I don't even know about. The golf committee reports, I called up there and said, when we getting the golf reports? Mike says, I sent them out 10 days ago. Well, I didn't, I didn't delete it, I just didn't get it. I mean, and, so I'd appreciate it, in the future, that Mike can still do that, but when you come to the meeting, tell us what's going on, because I'm kind of a doofus when it comes to that stuff.
We'll do that, and, and just for the sake of saying it, I know some of you have commented with some feedback on those weekly reports, and that's exactly what we, you know, we appreciate that, because that's the give and take that we're always looking for.
Yep, no problem, I haven't even talked about that one yet. So obviously, we've projected that we're going to miss revenues that we originally budgeted. So the next step is to cut labor, and how are we gonna do cut labor without disrupting the whole operation? Our proposed modifications there are cutting close to $200,000 worth of labor out of the F and B department. There's a few steps there, unfortunately, we're looking, you know, we're gonna have to combine the sales manager and the F and B manager's positions, that's gonna be the biggest savings, labor-wise per month. You know, it's necessary due to our lack of budgets, our lack of banquet bookings right now. It's gonna put additional help on, on Mike to sell and move.
So who, the sales manager is Ron?
Jessica's the sales manager, Ron is the F and B manager.
Who's the sales manager, Jessica?
Jessica.
Oh, you wanna combine those positions?
We're gonna combine those, Mike is working on who is the best fit and where he wants to pick up, him and Andy will pick up additional duties.
Okay.
Operational changes, we're gonna make a few recommendations, they are in our forecasted numbers. You know, the sales data just doesn't show that Monday nights are profitable being open for dinner. So we've eliminated Monday night dinner, we'll offer the same menu that we have on Sunday night. It'll be a labor savings of about $1,000 a month, just in the kitchen, and the, and on the floor. In the off-season, it doesn't make sense to have Tuesdays and Wednesdays, so we'd like to expand it, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and just offer a pub menu. So we, we scaled back the menu on Tuesdays and Wednesdays in the summer, to a pub menu and what we have on the Sunday night dinner menu. That will save about $3100 a month. You can add on about 14% in the payroll burden that was not calculated in those numbers. Next one, David. The beverage cart service, beverage cart is only profitable on the weekends. We run at a 60% labor. It is an amenity, right? It's, you know, it's not, it's not a profit center, it's an amenity. You know, obviously, we would recommend scaling it back to the weekends, Mike would, would schedule, if we know we're gonna be busy, to add a person. But ultimately, the beverage cart is driven heavily by our public play. Our members tend to do a little bit there and do a lot, and participate afterwards in the bar more. That's a potential savings of almost $1,000 a month. We have calculated all these sales losses, potential sales losses in the forecast, so that has been taken into effect. There is a few future options for, you know, one thing's on there is we've combined positions in admin, so we're eliminating an admin assistant that was part-time, and delegating the duties around, for the rest of the management staff. The additional options for future reductions would be like we discussed earlier. You would shrink the menu down and become more efficient. I don't, we're not recommending that at this time, but it's something that the board should know about and decide if we want to go that way.
Why would you, why would you not recommend this at this time with a pand-
The only reason I would not recommend it at this time is because of the survey results, right? They wanted better service, they wanted a wider menu, we just went to a wider menu. I mean, I came in, I've been here for almost a year, I remember I talked to Tom, I've known Tom for six, seven years, you know, he's, every time we talk about Sun and Lake, even before, he's mentioned the menu size. We've always had a very big menu here, when we expanded the kitchen, we expanded the menu even more. You know, it's not, scale down.
I think that would be reversed, during the pandemic, it sounds like it's smart to me to reduce the menu.
It is.
And then when the pandemic is over, then you go back to a normal menu.
Which, yeah, I just thought it would be too big of a change, I certainly can go that route, I think it's there, and it would certainly affect our labor.
Yeah, I think you should probably bring that to us, and see what we think about it.
Yep.
I'd like to see the 2018 menu.
Well, there's nobody eating at the place anywhere, what the hell is that?
Yeah, so keep, so keep in mind too, that a lot of those, a lot of those suggestions there that, that we're making, when we made our budget back in, what was it, July?
April, May.
Or April, May, our visibility was X when it came to COVID. Now, our visibility is X plus, 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 so yes, we, we have to react to these things, that's part of what we do on an annual basis, and so some of these suggestions are coming as a result of that. However, when F and B normalizes, whenever it does normalize, and we believe it will normalize, then, then we will make further changes to certain parts of the business, which will, which will be, which will reconcile with the amount of revenue that we're bringing in. So yes, I think that when, you know, we talk about reducing a menu size, or combining staff, things like that, those are reactions mostly to what we're being faced with right now, not necessarily long-term, by any stretch, because as Brian said, an expanded menu was something that, you know, the membership set was, it was a big deal for them. So if we were to make a decision there, in conjunction with, you know, you guys and us, we just have to know that there may be some, you know, there may be some pushback on that, and if, whether we're willing to take it or not, that's all there is to it. As we were talking, you know, it's one of those things that we can make a decision about, and, and as, and as you guys say, you know, have to deal with the public as a result.
Go back, can you go back page? Or go back to wherever the options were. Here's what I would recommend, we're not gonna decide this today, because that's not what we're here for. But at the next meeting, I would certainly like to see Casper come to us and say, here's what we recommend under the conditions, that we, we'd like to see changes made. So then the board can decide, and we go from there. Is that possible?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, there's, I mean, okay, I'm a little bit at a loss, because I think we have done similar kinds of things like that through time, but we can, we can do it again. Given the situation, this is a little bit different because of COVID, every, every month and even weeks can make, you know, it would be a new decision, it could be a new decision. If some government official throws out an executive order, you have to make a decision, you could have to make a decision right on the spot.
Saying that you want to, you have to, I assume they have to get our permission to combine those two positions?
No, we don't, no, that's just something, no, we don't need, we don't need your permission to do that, we're just throwing, we're just throwing, these are the things that, as Brian is saying, these are the options that we're trying to go to as a result of the extended COVID time.
So are you saying you're gonna do those things? Or you're just putting them in front of us to look at?
We're recommending, we would like to discuss them, obviously, we would, we forecasted for these to go into effect January 1, some of these, you know, the minor ones. Obviously, it's, it's always open for discussion, it's your business, your money, right? We're going to run it to the best of our abilities. We want to keep you in the loop, but I mean, it's, how do we get to?
For example, I'm trying to figure out what you guys are trying to do, so you're gonna tell us, you're gonna reduce the amount of time that the bar cart goes around the course, you're doing that? Or you're not?
We're recommending it right now to go for, into January. If we want to see cuts to the bottom line like this, we have to do things of this nature.
We can summarize those for the next meeting, and Mike and I, and Kevin and Brian will get together.
I'm just trying to decide if we have, if we have any input on it, which I don't really care, if you guys want to do it, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, these are just measures that we would take to make the bottom line look prettier, but we'll, we'll put this together in a document.
Don't you think it's your responsibility as our management company to?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
You think you need our permission to make- You think you need our permission to make things better?
No, we're going to give you recommendations at the next meeting. We're going to get together and present that to you.
I just think if, if we would have done more of this earlier, we wouldn't be here right now. And I just recommend that you ask for our input more.
Understood.
Whether right, wrong, or indifferent, this is the group that makes these decisions.
Understood.
And we do that off of your recommendations, whether you're right, wrong, or indifferent. We do that. So, and I preached this for three, four years, maybe even five. Please start asking what our opinion is instead of telling us what you're going to do. We probably go along with it. But we need, we need.
No, it's not what we're going to do.
No, and we still got, we still got, but I, I think you guys got to realize that we're unhappy as a group. Maybe. I don't know that. But we wouldn't be here if some of this stuff was being done and, and we were left in the loop. Because ultimately, we are the ones that make a decision. Like the golf course, you said, the golf course has gotten so much better. Well, it has. When I got on the board five years ago, we weren't spending money at all on the golf course. This board, it wasn't this board, but the board started giving you a lot more subsidy to get the golf course in line. And it's worked. And hopefully, you guys did your job by making it, doing it. You did a good job. But we made that decision. That wasn't a decision of Billy Casper at that time to, to get more money. All this stuff comes from us. And you're supposed to do the best job you can. To give us the people that will fix it when we make that, in my mind. I mean, I'm not speaking for anybody. But that's where it goes. I mean, you've done a great job on a golf course since five years ago. We spent $250 million one year for signs. And then tennis courts. And all that. I mean.
That was 250,000?
Oh, I'm sorry. 250,000.
I heard you get that 250,000.
Which is fine. And that board had, had, they were the ones that made that decision. But all these things need to come through the board. And I'm not trying to micromanage. I just want to know. Because there's several things that's happened and I hear about it two months later, or two weeks later. And, and I tell you, most of the changes have been made, have been positive. And I would have supported him. And maybe the rest of them here. But some of these things are, are pretty important that we know what's going on.
Absolutely.
And even in the future, if you survive this mess, you need to do more of that. And that's all I'm asking. And just as an individual supervisor, I, I'm not wanting to put my thumb on everything you do. I just want to know.
Correct.
And that way, we can work together.
See, I think this is great. But the reason that we had to get to this point is, is ridiculous.
Correct. I mean, going through this process, I know that Mike and I have talked about it.
This should be a process that you got, this should be an ongoing process where you come to us and you say, you know what, the bottom line's things, this is what we think we need you to do. These are our recommendations. We shouldn't have to have a situation where we're considering throwing you guys out to get here.
We agree 100% on, on that. I think that, again, the point that we're trying to make here is that right now, budgets are very, they're, they're, they're very dynamic at this point because with, with COVID. What we're saying here is these are, these suggestions are a direct result of the extended period of COVID. We don't know from week to week sometimes what, what's going to happen. What we're saying is we're making adjustments as quickly as we can to help offset the problems that we're getting, you know, from, from COVID. So what you're seeing up there, as, as Brian pointed out, is that our forecasts are changing because yes, we are implementing some of these changes. You pay us to do that. We're the experts. We're going to do that. If there's something that is, that, you know, that is so drastic, for example, that we, we know that we need to bring you in or ask you, we, we will do that. But I wouldn't think, I mean, and it may be different for all of you, what you think is drastic versus not drastic. But I wouldn't think necessarily combining a position, combining two positions in F and B is something that you feel as though you need to be brought in on. There's always a line that needs to be drawn there on, on, you know, what we can, what we bring to you and what we don't bring to you. If it is, then let us know that you want, you want to go that deep. But, you know, you guys pay us to be the experts here, or pay us to do our job and use our expert advice. And that's what we'll, we'll go and do. And we're making those adjustments on the, you know, as we move along.
With all due respect, when we had the meetings that we've had with you guys face to face, there's nothing on there that couldn't have been accomplished pre-COVID. In my opinion, a lot of that stuff could have been implemented a long time ago. And these are the type of things that we were want, at least I saw it, is what we were trying to accomplish by our meetings. We weren't efficient. We weren't getting what we wanted. And those are items that could be accomplished to help us get to where we want to go. No, that's not going to improve the service over there. It's not going to get maybe necessarily more people coming in, but it's certainly going to help us in the immediate future. We could have been doing this six months ago. Some of it, maybe, but not all of it. I disagree with you. And I think the reason is because, again, with respect to COVID and, and the, and the people that you need to have available in order to run your business, if COVID, if COVID was solved in June of, of this year, as opposed to still being, still ongoing, we would want that salesperson in place or the other extra person that we have in F and B, because we would have the business to generate, or the, 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 the demand. But we don't have the demand. So we're making those adjustments on the fly. So, you know, I, I appreciate the fact that you think we, we could have made every one of those decisions. Some, I think yes, but not all of them. And some of them are based on COVID.
But it definitely could have impacted some of us.
Yeah, and there's no question about that. No question about that.
Let me, let me ask you this. On, on this thing about the combining of the two positions, the reason that we need to know that is not to say yes or no, is that when we're having a drink in the bar with our friends and somebody says, what happened? I know.
Yes, I, let me, let me, let me distinguish between what I was trying to say. We don't need you to make the decision, but yes, we do need to inform you of what we're doing. I get that 100%. And I don't mean to, you know, to, to cloud the issue on that point. So.
Okay. Let me, can we go to food and beverage for one minute? Is there, are you food and beverage?
Yes.
Oh, you are. I'm sorry. Is there a rule of thumb as to how many employees you have based on your anticipated needs for that day? And the reason I ask that is because the other day I was in, actually, it's a couple of weeks ago, I was having a drink after a round of golf. And there were a lot of people, a lot of working people in the restaurant, and very few people having food. I mean, mostly, it was mostly at that time golfers. But it was a lot of, it was like seven or eight people working. And I didn't understand why there was so many. So is there a, is there something that you guys got that you use or?
Yeah, I, I can't speak to that particular day, obviously. But yeah, there is matrix and there's, you know, reservations. There's, you know, whether or not there's an event. You know, if there's a shotgun coming in at 5 o'clock, everyone's going to be hitting the bar. We need to load up on bartenders and staff. If there's an event in the other room, like last night, there was a small wedding. So we had staff that were setting the room. And we also had people working in the restaurant. So, yeah, you never, we never want to have seven people standing around for five diners. That's not our game plan. I got, I, I've talked to Mike about it. I'm not sure how that was scheduled. But typically, yeah, it depends on the flow, the history. If we know we're busy Wednesday through Friday nights and we're going to forecast 100 coverage for dinner, we'll have X amount of servers on and X amount of bartenders on. Same with the kitchen. If it's, if it's a night with, with a limited menu, like on a Sunday night, we're not going to have as many people in the kitchen cooking as we would on a, on a full blown Friday night. So absolutely, there are, there are things in place to make sure we don't overstaff. And I'm just not sure that particular evening. A lot of it has to do with what's going on banquet wise. And sometimes if there's a big wedding, like a 200 person wedding, not these days, but, you know, you'll, guys will be in there for prep and setting the room up the day before, or in the kitchen doing things to get ready for the events. But the food and beverage manager, they're tasked with, you know, making sure we have the proper coverage so we don't get bad service when we do get hit. But at the same time, now you, you can't plug someone in for an hour and send them home. You know, usually they work a shift. That's, you know, work for four hours. And the goal is to keep them productive in those four hours, whether they're serving, or doing side work, or getting ready for the next event, whether in the front or the back of the house. But if that's, that's not a good scenario, what you just threw out there.
It happens, it happens more often than you think, in my opinion, unfortunately.
Okay.
But let me ask you, and this one's really personal.
Yes, sir.
It probably doesn't interest anybody, but there's several times that I've had to ask waitresses for drink, for a drink.
Okay.
And they tell me they can't help me because they're under 18.
Well, that, that is true. But what's not good is, I mean, we, the answer is yes, sir. I'll be right back and come back with a drink. And then Mike gets it, or whoever's 21 or whoever's 18.
It's a personal thing.
Yeah.
They can't, they can't pour.
Right.
But they can grab somebody that can't.
No.
But the only, the only people that have the service are the people that can service.
Correct. And those, to his, to his point, they, they gave you the wrong answer at the time. But for the fact is, those, those folks are not servers. They're, they're probably a host. But, you know, he is correct. They, they gave you the wrong answer. They should have said, I will be right back.
And that proves our alcohol training is working. So they're not breaking the law. Keeps us out of trouble, right? So.
That's the reason you sales it down because I'm not drinking.
No, I, I will say, you know, I was here a few years ago. I met some of you in a previous board meeting with Ron Wonderling in the past. And the facility today looks 100 times better than it did just two, three years ago. The renovations have been awesome. I was with Kevin last night and he showed me around the kitchen. And, you know, I kind of, I was kind of working with him a couple of years ago on that. And I think all of you did a fantastic job on that project, managing that. And I think the team here on the ground with us have done a good job as well. Just from my, again, traveling in and out of town, the facility looks beautiful. The restaurant looks great. And the kitchen is spectacular. So to judge our food and beverage program over the last year and a half, I get it. I mean, you live here. You want it to be awesome. I think just from what I've seen and what I've talked to, you know, Mike and I talk each week and Kevin and I talk pretty frequently. I think, I think overall, we've done a good job, all things considered. The delay in the renovation, not being able to book because of that. The way the kitchen came out is awesome. The way the front of the house came out is awesome. And I just think, you know, with COVID, I mean, iconic brands in the industry are falling every day. Ruby Tuesdays, Pizza Hut, whoever, iconic brands are going out of business in food and beverage. And we're managing to hold on here. So I don't think we've had enough time to really see the, the positive impact of the renovation. I think if we had another year, so we can see how that, you know, hopefully get back to normal. But just, we're just taking Brownhouses as a facility in food and beverage right now, as is the industry with COVID. It's really, I can't, you know, it's not an excuse. It's, it's real. And as I travel, I mean, golf closes are closing down because of COVID. And we're doing a good job here. So is the board, just keeping this thing going. And, and we're trying to hold, you know, kind of hunker down and get through this. And, you know, sky's the limit. We're going to have this beautiful kitchen. And we're going to have banquets. It's going to be great. We just need a little more time to get through this pandemic.
David?
That it?
Where have you been?
The, chose our profit and lost what was originally budgeted, what it came down to in the forecast that we're moving, you know, those modifications that we just kind of recommended, we'd do 42,000. We can go further than that if needed. You know, obviously, everyone's going to encounter these same things. Go to the next slide. It gives us our EBITDA. We're forecasting $161,000 loss this year. The original budget was 180. You know, as you can see, 198 was our best year ever. We are trending in the, we will go in the right direction. Obviously, this board is, you know, wants to be more financially stable and move for, and for the future. And we will work with you to get there. I know we've kind of done questions, but let's continue on and do question and answer.
Of course, it's a question. Where are, where are you with most of your, your clubs? I mean, do you make, do you lose money with everybody?
No. Well, Tony's probably a better answer to this. But just food and beverage speaking, where we have large food and beverage footprints, they've been crushed. And that's not just our company. It's all three of those other companies up there, plus ClubCorp, plus you name them. If they have a large food and beverage footprint with a large food and beverage budget and fixed expenses and fixed salaries, they're really taking a hitting. Where we have facilities that we have a small food and beverage footprint, whether it be a 19 hole restaurant, a third of the size of yours, or a snack bar, we're crushing it. I mean, golf, golf is having, I mean, this is like the renaissance for golf. And golf is incredibly good right now. Food and beverage is incredibly bad. Anywhere where you rely on banquets, you're getting crushed. Doesn't matter what you do. You're, you know, for the last 20 years or 10 years or whatever, you've had X amount of dollars you've made in revenue from banquets. All that's gone. I, I live in Virginia, in Fludown, Virginia. We have a curfew. I mean, you know, you have to be home by midnight or else you get a misdemeanor. So, I mean, just, again, it's not an excuse, but it's just the, the situation we're in right now is really bad across the country. So yes, we are not doing well. And where we have large food and beverage, but so is everybody else not doing well either.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add into that on the golf side. I think it incredibly has been the best year in golf since anybody can remember with respect to public golf. And to kind of put that in context, we're going to, as an, as a, from a national standpoint, we're going to, we're going to beat last year's rounds of golf by 50 million this year. And that's with losing about 20 million because the majority of the country was down for at least a month in most states. And so this has been an exciting year for golf. Lot more people playing, lot more people, the, the members that were playing and the guests that were playing are playing more often. And, and they're actually paying a lot more if, if, you know, in, in, depending on the geographic location exceedingly more. So it's been good that way. But as Tom mentioned, across the board, and I can tell you, we have more elaborate F and B facilities in other locations. It's, it's been the exact opposite, unfortunately. And you guys know probably, you don't experience it as much here in Florida. I can tell you, I, I got to jump on a plane in, this afternoon and go to LA tonight. And you can't, in LA County, you can't even eat. You have to go to another county to go out and eat somewhere. You can't, you can't even eat, get a, go to a restaurant in LA County. So that's, that's tough. And, and those kinds of things are in a lot of different states. We, we're a little lucky here in Florida. I think that we're where we are and the ability to do what we can do. But that still has people scared. And until this vaccine gets rolling and people feel more comfortable, I think we're going to be a little ways away from, from, from recovering on the F and B side, fully.
And to be, you know, in the slides Brian shared was missing EBITDA by 21,000 on revenue of, a miss of half a million or 480 or something. I mean, that's a really good, I mean, I know it's real money. You know, you don't want to be 21,000 away from your, your goal. But to miss it by that with everything that's gone on here is, is pretty good. I mean, it's pretty remarkable. Great job. Again, I understand it. It's not what we had on paper, but with everything that's happened in the world, to miss that number by that with a revenue, you know, shortfall revenue of almost half a million dollars, I think it's pretty good. So, you know, you mentioned, you know, being unhappy with food and beverage. I mean, I, that was a knife in my heart when I heard that. So one of the things that we're doing in the meantime, Mike and I have a weekly call. We're going through all things food and beverage. So that's been going on for about two months now. And it will continue to go on for the next six months as part of a program we have. Kevin Heim and I, I've known Kevin for many, many years. And, and I call him, I've said, no BS, what's going on? And then, you know, so he and I are in constant contact. And of course, Brian and I are on the phone quite a bit as well. So I hear what you, I hear comments like that. And I, we're on it. And we're not going to rest. And I take it personally. And I just want you to know that I hear you and we're going to, we're going to tackle those. Thank you.
I think most of people, in fact, I know, I think COVID time, we're not judging you guys on COVID. I think you've done the best you can do. So I, but we've seen a trend from, well, about five years ago, and we're not going the right way. And I'm excited about you talking with Mike and being more involved. But this has nothing to do with COVID. We understand, I'm sure, like last year and, and when we redid the kitchen, I liked your fingers. You weren't down far at all from having the whole place tore up for half, half a year. So I'm not saying you're not trying, but, and I'll, I'll be the first one to raise my hand. And I've heard from two of your employees, the kitchen is not, or the food and beverage is not an amenity. I've been told that it is. Well, it never come from here. Now, it might, because we've never been told. But I'll put my hand up first. I don't necessarily have to make money in, in F and B, but I don't want to pay the, the price that we're paying now. COVID, non-COVID, anything. So, and, and that's So, and that's the problem. I, I am not, this is not an amenity, as far as I'm concerned, in Sonoma Lake.
Yes, sir.
So, so, okay, so on that point, which we're hearing loud and clear, and I, and I get it, I understand that, the same way that we had that, say, those same kind of concerns years ago with the golf course, and we worked together to fix those things, we can do that same thing with F and B, we, I will tell you this, whatever it takes for us to feel comfortable working together, figuring out F and B, you have our commitment, we will do that, whatever that information flow needs to be, however frequent it needs to be, how many ever meetings we need to have, personal meetings, meetings together, workshops, whatever it takes, we have a plethora of experience in F and B, and not just in COVID, but, you know, before that, and maybe it's not coming across, I'll, we'll, we'll take the hit for that, I guess, because we haven't done a good enough job convincing you of some of the things that we need to do, so that's us. But you, you're hearing it from us, Tom is very actively involved, we're trying to work our way through all of this, and we pledge to be able to work, you know, through this issue to meet your expectations, the same way we did with the golf course, the same way we did with golf operations. We understand that's your feeling about a weak point, and we also understand that does, does translate to the overall bottom line, and that it's very important that we solve that problem, so you have our commitment to get that solved.
Are you done?
Okay.
I have a question on the golf course, just so you don't feel left out. I've been sitting there all day, nobody's been agreeing. So, I'm hearing from the people who have made presentations to us, that one of their things that they've spotted and need to be, that they think needs to be addressed is the, uh, the rough, the, uh,
The rough and weeds.
The rough and weeds, thank you. What do you think?
I think that's, that's an easy comment to make when you come onto a property that you haven't operated ever.
Well, I happen to agree, the weed situation is, I mean, I play the courses, the weeds seem to be, I don't know, I've, I've been told before it was a watering issue, but I'm asking you, why, why do we have a problem with weeds on the, on the course?
I think that we have made a tremendous amount of progress in our overall turf coverage across the acres of the golf course, and we continue to focus on expanding the consistency of health and coverage across all aspects of the playing conditions out here. To Mr. Gilpin's point, five years ago, 10 years ago, the golf course was, if you want to put a percentage to it, which is always a way to go about it, I would say there were probably somewhere along the lines of 75% weed-free, to the point now where I'd say we're closer to, you know, if you have 100 acres of golf course and you're 95% weed-free, you're saying you've got five acres of weeds out there, I don't think we have five acres of weeds out there, I think we have closer to maybe one acre, spread over, reality, 200 acres on this golf course, where now we are managing it by spot treating versus large blanket application, so, yeah, we are never happy with the condition of any golf course we manage, we're always working to get better, that same philosophy holds true here. The agronomic plan you have in front of you, again, we haven't talked about that at all, but one of the things we haven't talked about here in any of this is truly a full transparency into who we are and our partnership with you, and that, that extends through every aspect of the business. I think we've talked about it in depth with food and beverage, I think we've talked about it in a good amount with the golf operations, and obviously not much with, with maintenance, which from my perspective is great, because when we used to have these meetings, it was all about golf course maintenance and the challenges that we were working through, so the fact we're having this conversation now and this part of the presentation is great. I think we've made a lot of progress, but the agronomic plan you have in front of you, that's, that's our plan, that, that addresses the concerns of the weed population, it shows the pre-emerge applications that we're making to continue to push back that weed seed population that exists out there. Any pre-emerge we use is at best 95% effective, and that's just industry chemistry, chemistry. So, if you have 100,000 weed seeds on the golf course and you control 95% of them, you still have 5,000 out there, and the next year you reduce that population that much more. So, to your point, and it comes down to an experience relationship as well, just like it does with food and beverage, the faster you want that progress to occur, the more money you gotta throw at it. We understand that golf course maintenance is part of the solution here, it's part of the process with food and beverage and golf course operations, and we all have our financial and fiscal responsibility to the overall operations of the club, and so we, we put our agronomic plan together with, with the most, call it agronomic, and financial responsibilities in place. Yes, we could probably control more weeds more quickly, but it's gonna cost the club a lot more money, and we have worked hard to produce the plans each year that are part of that approved budget process that the board looks at and says, "Okay, that makes sense", and based on membership feedback, based on membership play levels increasing, based on outside play levels increasing, the 95% recommendation rate, all those metrics point to the correct trend in what we're doing now. If we think the amount of weeds, which, by the way, this is the first comment I've heard about the weed population, because I do believe we've made tremendous progress on the overall conditions and weed population on this golf course, especially in the last five years. But if that's the point we want to discuss, then that's on me, I haven't heard that, and I apologize, and we can have that conversation.
We've come a long way. I don't think any of us up here would disagree with you, I was just, the other companies happen to point out, they think that's an opportunity, that was, they were using it as a selling point.
I agree, I mean, that's, that's, that's an easy comment to make, and I'm not gonna throw anybody under the bus by any means, because quite honestly, if we were going onto a golf course, we would, and I'll say "we", and I will say "I" because this is my department, I do my best to ask as many questions as possible to gain as much information about what the history of the property is, because it's a bit, maybe ignorant isn't the right word, but it is. Short-sighted, thank you, that's much more polite, that's correct. To make, to make those assumptions without, without truly understanding what the history of the property is. This golf course was significantly challenged from a playability and conditional standpoint 10 years ago, significantly challenged in this market, it's leading the market now from a conditional playability standpoint. So, without asking the right questions, it's easy to make those comments, I can make that comment easy while going onto any other golf course out there, you can, you can pick. So, I would love to, I would love to meet the people who say that and have the conversations with them and say, "What are you seeing that I'm not seeing?", you know, multiply, they're always better, but I think as a whole, we've, we've done well, and certainly there are areas to improve on. We challenge ourselves every day to find those areas, to make sure that we keep those in front of us, and I, I would say that those areas that you're being asked about and told about are probably reflected in the agronomic plan that you have in front of you already.
Yeah, I don't know about the rough, I'm always in the fairway.
Ah, there you go. So, keep in mind too, that, you know, you see the golf course kind of every day when, when you guys play for the most part, your, your, your public players, when they come out, they, they don't see it as often, and their, their view, if you want to consider it, is pretty, pretty darn good at 97, 98% favorability rating, which is, which is, which is excellent, and that doesn't mean that we want to try to get better, we certainly do, but you're not gonna get, we can't get there cutting labor, we can't get there cutting expenses. So, it's a work in progress, and I think Michael agree that the weed population, any given year, is often dependent on whatever climate you have that year that, or, or months prior to it, whether it's a wet climate, dry climate, et cetera, et cetera, so that's something that changes from year to year. I think the most important thing is that we have a plan, an actual plan, which is in front of you, and we try to, we try to use that plan throughout the year and, and make adjustments throughout the year too, as, as necessary, because it's a, it's a very dynamic thing with, you know, with agronomy, so I think that's important.
Last time I saw this plan was September of 2017, wasn't it?
We, we update the plan annually.
Yeah.
It gets, it gets, it gets tweaked annually, and the plan, the plan, once you put it together, is a substantially
I think when we had our last corporate meeting, which was, I think, in 2017, I don't know, maybe '18, which brings me to another point, if we were to go forward, I need to commit from you guys that we see you every six months, because that's the way to alleviate problems.
Absolutely, I have no problem committing, and the last time we talked about this, we did talk about having, you know, quarterly workshops, I think that's the way to meet, that way we can get to all of you at the same time, and we don't have to disrupt you, you know, whatever you're doing that, you know, that day, and try to schedule everything. I think, I would suggest quarterly workshop meetings, we have no problems with that, providing a, you know, short presentation, and then we can have open dialogue back and forth. We did that with the golf course, and it worked out real well, I saw it, so why not do that same thing, why not, why not, you know, why not make that, you know, a regular occurrence?
So, if we were to go forward, we got your commitment on that.
Yes, absolutely, yes, yep.
Okay, so, if I can kind of interject here, I certainly appreciate the level of detail you've gone through and brought to us, we had blocked out two hours for this presentation, we started early and we're still at the end of two hours now. What I would suggest is that what I've heard today would have been really good for a workshop, and what I'd kind of like to do now is so that we aren't here all day, is encourage you to wrap up and tell us why we should stay with you as opposed to going somewhere else, and unless there's something else you really think is important for us to see today, I think we need to try to wrap this up.
Yeah. Well, okay, so the overriding thing here that I think we want you to understand is what I said from the beginning, we want to be here, now, we're not looking at this from a haphazard standpoint, we've, we've put a lot of effort into planning and strategy and so forth, hence the marketing plan that we have, the agronomic plan that we have, the ideas that we have for membership, the thoughts we're thinking about with food and beverage, the fact that we're, you know, we have an expert on the food and beverage side, we realize that that's a weakness right now, we understand that, yes, COVID has a little to do with that, but to be honest, the good, the honest truth is, F and B needed work all along, and we just haven't been as good in F and B as we could be, and I know we can be. We've, we're successful in other places on the F and B side and restaurants, and I'm talking about delivering on whatever the expectation might be, whether that's a profitable business, a break-even business, or an amenity, whatever that is, we've been able to do it. I think what we're missing, what we're missing, as Tom alluded to a little bit ago, is the fact that we're, we're trying to get out of the starting block here with a new renovation, and, you know, we got hit with a couple things, COVID, some other things, some shutdowns, some other, other stuff, and it's kind of, it's kind of put us back a little bit behind. So, my suggestion is, as I said just a bit ago, to keep you guys informed, and I think that's one of the things that is, is, you know, a driving issue here, to keep you guys informed, we need to meet more frequently, we need to have those workshops, and we need to talk through things a little bit more on the F and B side, especially on the F and B side, because we know that's where we're a little, we're a little weak. You know us, we've been around for a while, you know, we, we've got the expertise, we're good at this at a lot of facilities, we can get this thing fixed, I guarantee it, we can get this thing fixed and meet your expectations, and that's the most important thing, I think, is to get, is to meet your expectations. So, from our standpoint, the same way we have delivered on the golf course, the golf operations, we will do the same on the F and B side, we will, we will get to a point where we can get this facility to break even. I don't recommend that we do this heavily on the expense side, because I think that will have a detrimental effect, but I do believe on the revenue side, there are ways at which we can increase what we're getting there and actually overcome our deficit that way. In our out-year pro formas, once we have a chance to kind of normalize a little bit, you'll be able to see that step, you know, in the right direction. We're still a little gun-shy, you know, honestly speaking, about COVID and the impact of that over the near term, no one really knows, and God forbid there's a COVID-29 or a COVID-41 or something like that that comes along, how we're ever gonna react to that, no one knows, but in the long run, and in kind of keeping inconsistent with what we're doing across the board with our other clients, that's what we're showing, that's what we're showing. So, what I hear today is the need to get, to get you more, to get you more informed or more frequently informed, we hear that, we will do that, you have our commitment on that. We went to the weekly reports to help, and Mr. Gilpin will figure out whatever's going on there with yours, so to make sure that you're, you're getting your weekly reports as well. We'll ask Mike, I think, to, to expand a little bit in that area, maybe some things that we could do that in that weekly report to keep you a little bit more informed as well, and then you get, there's a lot of facts and figures in there and some other things, but, you know, we can add in some other key points that maybe we're thinking about and so forth, because it's a good information piece, I think, for you to help you, help you with making, or understanding what we're trying to do. But overall, I just want to say, this team, the onsite team with Mike Lemire's leadership, and the regional team and the national team together have valued this relationship. It's 15 years, I think, if I have it right, you know, since we've been, since we've been working together, there has never been an issue that we couldn't overcome, there's never been something that, you know, we just threw up our arms and said, "We can't do any better", we've always found a way, and what we need to do now is sit down, roll up the sleeves, and find a way, and you have our commitment in doing it. Those other guys, I understand, they're gonna try, you know, they have their ways of doing things, we have the inside information, being here for as long as we have, and we know the market probably is good or better than anyone, especially is how it affects this club. In our opinion, that makes us the best choice. So, we thank you, obviously, for listening to us, I hope you can hear our passion, that we want to be here, and we want this facility to be good for the residents and members and a focal point in the community, that's, you know, that's our end game, that's what we want to do, and I think we can do it. So, thank you for the time tonight, or today, and I guess if there's any other questions, we're happy to answer.
Let's open it up to final questions. Anyone from the public with any questions?
Jolly! Ask him something, would you?
Well, I'll do it, Mr. Gilpin. No, seriously, in the last group that was in here, Charlie Shields, sorry.
In the last group that was in here, I ask them, I'll just condense it, how you make the restaurant a happening place as opposed to a dull place. Condensed.
Okay, so I'll, oh, sorry. So, I'll, I'll answer my part, and then I'll ask Mike, Tom, whoever to want to stand up and ask, you know, give, give their opinion. So, dull is, is, is not conducive to increasing people to want to stay there very often and actually continue to drink and eat, so that's not good. How do you do that in other places, and what would I think we could do here is obviously we need to get, we need to have more kinds of, of, of member types of events, interesting things for members to do, we have that kind of programming at other places, we get, to get people more frequently coming to the restaurant, whether that be through some special theme type of nights, or entertainment nights, or things that we probably have done in the past to some degree, but need to do more frequently. One of the things that I'd suggest is, you know, and, and I'm one for, I am one for, for getting a membership involved in some of the decision-making, and I like the idea of establishing certain kinds, certain kinds of committees that, that actually have the heartbeat of the membership, what they'd like to see and so forth, and I would, I think in this case, I think because we're talking about communication, and we, how, how important that is, I think it's, I think it would be a really good thing to, to put a group of, diverse group of members together, that I think would be a sounding board, if you will, on how things are going in, in the food and beverage department and in the restaurant as a whole, and I think that would be helpful in collaborating on ways in which we can make, A, make things less dull, more exciting, and make, you know, so, you know, we kind of eliminate some of the guesswork that way by getting more people involved in the decision-making process, I think that will help tremendously. So, that, and I think just keeping things, I guess I would, I would characterize it as not stale, where we're changing, adjusting, menu changes more frequently, adjustments, specials, things like that, that would, you know, that, so people don't become so, you know, ho-hum about everything that goes on in the, in the F and B department. So, I think those are a couple things, not, not to mention other things that we can do. Anybody else want to stand up and offer, offer some thoughts here?
So, you know, I feel over the last few years, I've been instrumental in bringing in a lot of different new events, we started doing trivia nights, that's been, you know, well, well received. We've done comedy nights, all sorts of different, sold out a lot of social events. Obviously, all that, that all came to a screaming halt at the end of last March. And I already put even in my marketing plan, I know Charlie, you don't have a copy of that, but there's definitely a lot of those events, or more that we're more than willing to bring back. I've literally had trivia night on the calendar probably three times, and we had to keep taking it back off, because it's, it's just the timing's not quite right yet. But in the marketing plan, there is a few ideas in there, and I'm not restricted to just those plans. But obviously, when, when the time is right, you know, we want to pack the clubhouse again. It's definitely what we're here to do, and we look forward to doing it, so.
Well, what I was trying to articulate is the difference between the wall, where we have trivia night, or have events, and packing the bar.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Not having 15 empty dining tables, okay, and just the local golfers at five or six tables. That's what I'm talking about, drawing people into that.
Absolutely. And that's all part of the plan, too, with some of the fields, the things that we got going in there with, with alacard dining and others, other things. Obviously, the past year's been, obviously, really difficult to really get the place loaded up. But, you know, generally in season, you know, we're, we're definitely wall to wall in there. So we look forward to getting back to that here as soon as the timing's right, so.
I'll add in something as well before Tom talks. Keep in mind, too, that, you know, folks are presently, a lot of folks are presently reluctant to want to be in a, in a restaurant. They just, they just have a hard time, even though it's
We're looking down 27 and looking at all the bars and seeing how packed
Yes, some are, but, and I agree with you, but not, not everyone. I'm just, I'm kind of giving you a little bit of, of information that we have, sort of that we're noticing around the country. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't continue to try. I think Mike's saying that he's trying to put those events together and get some more, more things on the board, and try to get, generate interest. But if we put them out there, and we try to promote them, and nobody wants to come out, or not enough people want to come out, you know, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough thing. So the very fact that trivia night was so successful, but yet you're having to cancel it now week after, or month after month, and what have you, it's generally speaking because of COVID. Now, at some point, that is going to change. And I promise you, we will have, we just, we just, you just spent a ton of money renovating that restaurant to get more people interested in coming out. We're not giving up, obviously. We've got a great facility now. We have, you know, we have, you know, I don't know how many televisions are in there, but there's a ton. And, and I know the people are, the people that are able to sample that are having a good time there. So if we can get, you know, as we work through this, I think we'll get more and more people involved. Trust me, it won't be because we don't have a really good social programming part of our F and B department. We will have that. We have done that. Mike knows what's been successful. He'll continue to do that. And we will get people out there. We'll have, we will make it available to those who want to come out. So, Tom, you want to add?
Yeah, thanks for the question. I would just add that when I work with properties on food and beverage, the, the goal is to have many types of different events at different price ranges, so that there's something for everybody in the community. It could be something for, you know, the wine connoisseur who likes a high-end wine dinner. It could be, you know, something like, like a high tea for the, for the women, respectfully. So I think if we create a calendar of events that are, talk to all the different facets of interest in the community, and not just have, you know, beer specials. You know, we have something that's well-rounded for someone who wants to spend $10, and someone who wants to spend $110. And we kind of put the program together, plan it out in advance, so we can get the word out, so people have enough time to plan. You know, the different street parties kind of promoting going to the restaurant as the first option. And the other thing I'd say, I understand that, you know, a lot of restaurants are busy, but you have a gigantic restaurant. I mean, so if you have 10 tables in your restaurant, and the restaurant down the street has, you know, 11 tables and they're full, you're just as busy as they are. But we just have a really big room. So to fill that up, it's challenging, for sure. So I, it's, it's easy to look, you know, I was at Ale House yesterday, and it was packed, and it's a big restaurant. So we want to get to that point here as well. But I just think, you know, we have a really big place, so sometimes it might not look busy, but it actually is as busy as some places up and down the road. But my answer to that question would be to get a well-rounded calendar of events that kind of hit all the different facets of interest in the community. And then with, you know, working with Kevin just on keeping the menu fresh and interesting, bringing in local seasonal options, you know, having some higher-end items on the menu for those who want that, but also not outpricing it, so people won't go there right away. That's our first thought.
Do you think the focus is fine dining at supper, or family dining?
I think the focus is family, but I think we need to include elements of finer. I won't say fine dining, because that's a whole different world. But I think, if it were me, I would like to see some higher-end options on there for those who would want that type of experience. It even says, you know, it is a larger room. We, you know, we could do things in that room to, you know, on special nights, to kind of make it a special, like a wine dinner is a perfect example. We'll bring in a wine maker, or someone, you know, who's traveling, because Florida's the hotbed for wine. That's, everyone comes here first when they travel. But we can get winemakers here. We can have a wine series. We can do wine tastings. We can do that type of thing. They kind of speak to the, I won't say higher-end clientele, but the person looking for that higher-end experience. I think we need to hit that market as hard as we do the family. But going to the restaurant is still needs to be a family club experience.
I can accept a special night, but I think we're missing out, that we're not really family. We're got, I'm beginning to think that we're, we're overpricing for a family to come here. It's too, too expensive. And if you, if you, I've talked to some, you know, Caddyshack is a prime example here in town. It's a restaurant, not quite as big as us, but it got plenty of tape. And they serve very good food at a very reasonable price. And I think we have no real outside traffic, per se, and something got to change on that.
Yeah, I think that's a valid point, too. And the kind of what we've done, I think, to offset that some in the past, has been a little bit, you know, more robust banquet business, which is kind of where we've sort of recaptured some of the margins that we, that we've lost. We don't have that right now. And at some point, we're going to get it, of course, but in the interim, yes, I understand. And I think, I'm, I'm sort of with Tom there as well on, on family style. I think that's probably the one, the style that probably is, you know, most well-received. But to his point, I think we could have, could have certain events that we do, that would be more on the finer side. And I think if we were to put a, again, I don't, I don't mean to harp on a, another group or so, or committee of sorts, but, you know, we can, we can poll them and, and find out their thoughts on this. But I think certain kinds of events that would be, you know, a more of a semi-formal, or something along that line, I think that some people would enjoy that. Not every day, but, but, but on occasion. And a little bit of that is, is fun to do every so often. I think that, that, that is something that would be fun, you know, from time to time, so.
Yeah, I think I agree with the concept of having some higher-end events. I think that, that if you look at our market, we are multi-generational, but we're skewed older social security set. And I think that appealing more for the senior level, smaller portions, lower prices, is going to get more activity on a daily basis. And I don't think we've been doing that. But I think that rather than hash that out now, that, that's a good subject for a workshop.
Yeah.
And figuring out what we want to be. I think that was one of the things I raised two years ago, when we approved on my first full meeting on the board, that we approved the going forward with the million-dollar renovation. And I said, I'm not sure we know what we want yet. And I'm, and unfortunately, we, we got what we wanted, and then didn't have any way to fulfill it, because we literally went into COVID as soon as we came out. So it's like, you know, we have what we have now. Let's figure out what's the best thing to do with it. But I think that's, that's a workshop level, not a
Yeah, I think it would be probably a multi-workshop level, but I think we could, I think we could definitely, you know, come to some conclusions there, you know, give and take. So, yeah.
Do you like our menu?
Yeah, I, like I said earlier, I think it's a little bit big for the times we're in. I guess, I know Kevin really well. Kevin's a Rich Carlton guy. I mean, Kevin can make the highest end, and he can make the best club sandwich, too. So I think your menu serves its purpose. It's good. I think sometimes, I don't want, well, I think sometimes we're trying to please everybody with that menu. You know, based on feedback, I can't believe you took it off the menu, put it back on. So now we, we end up with this menu that's larger than it needs to be, especially with everything going on. Again, not, not to belabor the point, we've already talked about it, but it, this is a hold-and-hover type world we're in right now. It's a streamlined, it's menus that are this big are now this big. So I think right now, I, my recommendation would be to streamline a little bit more than what it is now. That would help out with labor in the kitchen. That would help out with just, you know, waste, by not having so many, you know, mise en place items in the kitchen, so.
If you were to streamline it, which way would you streamline it? What's, what's the moderately priced food, or, I mean, what do you, where would you?
I think it'd be a menu of the greatest hits, you know, kind of like, we'll take the current menu, Mike can run sales reports, and we can have a good menu mix of appetizer salads, sandwiches, and entrees, at all, and again, at all price points. And we still want to hit our cost of goods, so whether that means adjusting the recipe, and using, you know, maybe smaller portions to hit a determined price, you can back into a price instead of just throwing a price out there based on what you're doing. But I think, I just think, you know, at the end of the day, we need a menu that speaks to everybody. So we have some lower-priced items, some mid-priced items, and some, you know, some nicer fillets or whatever as well, just so that, so there's something for everybody. But we don't need, we don't, I think there's 36 items on the menu right now. I think, again, all things considered, maybe half that, from what we have, maybe 20 items instead of 35, 36. And again, not, not permanent, like Tony said, not, not forever, just
We'll call it a, it would be a COVID menu.
COVID, yeah. And, you know, and law places have COVID assessments, so we don't want to do that, right? So, yeah. So, yeah, that's what my recommendation would be for that.
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of our restaurants take the, take the, the season into account when they create menus, and, and sort of, you know, turn the menus over as the year goes on for different, that apply more to one season versus another. So I think that's another way to get, so you don't get, you know, the menu gets stale. You don't have to have as many items. You just turn the menu over more often, so.
So we're going to do that?
Yeah, that's, that's, I think the next step, excuse me, blah, blah, blah. Next step would be for Mike, Kevin, and Brian and I to kind of put together some talking points for your next meeting. And just, you know, run it by you, let you know where our head is, what we're thinking, and then, you know, get a nod, and then go forward pretty quick. What would be my recommendation?
Want us to critique what foods are
Not, not critique it, just let you know, give more of a heads up. And again, like what you were saying before, sir, you know, just everyone knows about it, and
Informational, informational piece, yeah. Let you, let you know what's coming. So when somebody complains to you about the menu being different, you guys have some artillery, that's all. Because they will, I'm sure.
Okay.
Anything else?
Oh, gentlemen, something from the public.
I went to the meeting on Friday, so Bill and I decided, let's go to the restaurant on Friday night and see how it is. We came in there at 5:30, quarter, 6:00. And other than Bill's group that was just standing there and drinking afterwards, we were the only two members in that bar except for Scott at the bar. So of all the people that I, that I'm thinking of spacing, there was probably 25 to 30 people in there. We were the only two members in there. So there are outside people coming in there. And it's probably more than what we think. They're just not in there in the same time line. And as we were leaving, more people were coming in. And I still did not recognize, not that I know everybody here, but as we talk of people that are members, I'm pretty well-versed at seeing most of them, because I'm one of those beer cart girls that you want to get rid of.
Scratch that, scratch that later.
So anyways, I think, I don't know. I think that, like you said, once COVID is gone, or out of this, we can go back to what our old recommendations were, because we have sellouts of a lot of things. I played trivia nights with these guys. I've run a lot with them. And go and call up, and they've already sold out. And it's like, how can you do that? You can't do that to me. I've got to get, I've got to have this fix. You know, we have, we've always had great events, and we're not stale and dull people as far as a getting together and liking to be little people. But right now, we're all in these little pockets, like you said, and they're comfortable with that. But once we feel that comfort has relaxed enough, I think we can go back to being this great, fabulous sun and light that we all love, and that's why we're here.
Yeah.
So with your help with them, because we all know that, that, you know, they need to have all these points taken into them. So I really hope that we can get a partnership that lets us come back and be stronger than what we were before.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the feedback. And you're exactly right. That's, that's what we're looking to do as well. I will add that with respect to determining how much F and B revenue is, is public versus member, we can delineate that. We can show that, we can show that number. So if you want to keep tabs on that, maybe give you a little bit better understanding of how many, how much revenue that is being generated is via membership versus public. We have the capability of doing that. We can include that in the weekly reports that we send to you guys. So.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I haven't gavelled yet, because I wanted to discuss next steps. And my suggestion, and I'm open to alternatives, but my suggestion would be that we absorb all this information we've gotten in the last couple of sessions, and have a workshop after our January 8th meeting to discuss where we go, and whether we're ready to make a decision, or what we need to do to make a decision, in a workshop after our January 8th meeting. Does that make sense? Do they have any better suggestions as to where we go from here?
What's on the agenda for January 8th as of right now?
So far, well, I have the discussion of presentations for the January 8th meeting. I also have, the board just asked Indigo to bring back changes or recommendations in regards to the F and B operation. So you did have that. I don't, I'll be meeting with staff tomorrow for our morning department head meeting, and we're going to talk about agenda for January 8th, because the agenda packets will go out December 31st, which is a Thursday for that meeting. So I don't have anything else offhand.
What's left over from last meeting was, you had to give us an updated
Yeah, I'm going to look at my notes, but I can
I mean, there's, there's like several things that we left on the table, right?
There weren't several, but we are going to get a report back on Ponce de Leon North.
Well, I think, I think we ought to do the workshop. I don't want to push it much further down the road.
Yeah.
I think we decided to do a workshop.
I mean, while we're all still thinking about it.
Yep.
So to do a workshop that afternoon
We could do it
Yeah, late morning, hopefully.
Immediately following the meeting, we could have a workshop, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah.
I think that's probably the way to go.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Sounds good.
Thank you. With that, I'm closing the meeting. Thank you.